You have a flag?
And to the Republic for which it stands.
I'm sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties with my sharing.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we are going to begin tonight with a commendation for the Support Life Foundation. And we have a special guest with us tonight, Salah El Bakri. And just he was with the Support Life Foundation. When the Milbury residents on Hemlock Avenue left their homes in an apartment fire, his organization stepped up and within the matter of just a few weeks raised $77,000 to support these residents to help them find new homes and stable housing and keep their lives together. So Mr. Al Bakri, would you like to say a few words about you and your organization and your fundraising efforts?
Yes, indeed. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. Thank you for the gesture. Very grateful for this. As you've, we've been talking right now for a few weeks texting back and forth. And you know, we got involved with this whole fire indirectly. Interestingly enough, we were running another mega campaign covering 47 organizations around the bay, targeting food insecurities. And we were delivering these boxes of incredible amount of about 78 pounds of food staples and masks to less fortunate families around the bay. And lately, it's been even the lower, the middle class and the lower middle class that is actually hurt the most, in my opinion. The idea was to engage 47 organizations with that effort and distribute a total of 24 metric tons of food. The night before that this incident happened, we incidentally have served this particular apartment complex with four of our boxes. And interestingly enough, the day after the tragedy happened. So we were called through Red Cross to take care of the Muslim population since I am personally a Muslim and I know what the dietary needs, especially during Ramadan. So we, that's where the involvement began. But soon enough, I realized that they're all in ridiculously bad shape. And not to their fault, it was the coronavirus for two and a half months. The stories we heard from all the residents, one is more heartwarming, disheartening than the other. And before you know it, we decided we've got to do something. We have all these communications, all these years of building relationships, especially with the city of Burlingame, with the clergy on the whole peninsula from South City through Menlo Park. We had philanthropy field all scanned and we have good connections. And we have also connections with all the city council members, especially on the city of Burlingame. I recall that my friend Michael Brownrick from Burlingame reached out to you and all your city council members and asked if you'd like to share in, if we launch this effort. And the response was positive. Thank you specifically to you, Mr. Mayor. Not only did we launch this, but we exceeded all of our expectations. In the process, we were able to mobilize basically two cities. We had some members of our community at the Sine Foundation, which is a Muslim community foundation on the peninsula. I solicited their help. They started cooking for these families on daily basis. We were delivering an excess of 60 boxes and I believe till today, we're still delivering these boxes of food. Warm home cooked meal. We insisted that we don't care when a cater for them. These people have lost their home and their belongings and we thought of this. So in total, with the help of galvanizing that, besides your council members, it's also your city manager, Tom, who with the help of the emergency services secured another lease on life for these people when we were able to lease the hotel El Rancho, a hotel next door to them. And that gave them another 30 years. To my knowledge, up till this second, five of these families cannot find a place to host them. However, the amount of funds we raised for them, the in-kind of donations, in reality, really exceeded about possibly for probably average $8,500, of which monetary was $7,000 per family. And I'm so thrilled. I'm really so thrilled. Because you know, in the world of nonprofits, we always say that a system is as strong as the number of its connections. A system is as resilient as the number of its connections. And the connections we were able to pave and connect is through all the mediums. The nonprofit world, the religious world, the for-profit world, and the main street restaurants and businesses who put us on their front pages. The people who cooked for us like Ilia Restaurant and brought in this incredible meals. They, the front doors, the nonprofits, we had Donna Carlson brought in the Mothers for Poverty, Against Poverty, and they donated a lot of gift cards. And then we had also your, our great mayor of also Burlingame, Emily Beach, who really publicized it and pressed all the religious community to participate. So in total, 100 and close to 120 people participated in the campaign, including institutions, religious institutions as the Sine, and this is where we are today. We're really excited there. When we went to deliver the checks, the amount of tear, you were, you witnessed the event itself, Ruben. And you've seen how one of them mentioned that day that for a week she hasn't slept, 19-year-old kid. She said, I knew we were gonna be homeless. I knew we were gonna be homeless. Now I know we are not going to be. So with that, I'm very grateful for the experience. And I really wish that for the future, if should something like this happen, it just crossed my mind. If we in the future, we're gonna have, let's say, a major tragedy or five, six apartment complexes are gonna be recalled or we have any of those emergencies with, you know, earthquake, God forbid, on land or sea. Are we really ready without the help of the federal government, without the help of FEMA to mobilize all the resources? And I was thinking along the lines of possibly starting a resiliency hub for all these nonprofits and churches, somewhere where you can walk in and get your information and connect so the system maintains its strength and the ability to reach people. And the amount, the resulting amount of pain is reduced by having all these connections. This is what I'm, my mind is saying that I'd love to take this conversation offline. I know this is not the time. Maybe it's also a conversation that should be taken care at or should be addressed at the county level where there's more funds available. But we're just throwing it out there and hoping that this experience doesn't go without being repeated. It doesn't have to be Support Life Foundation, who's currently a partner with San Mateo County, a partner with Oakland Unified School District, the city of Oakland. We're having many workforce development programs that are existing. And that's what allowed us to really raise this fund very quickly. And I want to give a shout out to really Michael, Donna, and Emily from the city of Burlingame, who really stepped it up to a much higher level. And Donna and Michael, who reached out to the philanthropic field. And really, at one time, they were, they almost matched one for dollar for one dollar for what we matched. And that was an amazing effort. So I'm very pleased. I'd love to repeat this experience for the sake of our cities, not necessarily just Milbury, but all around. And maybe we can take a week, set us a meeting in the future with the emergency services department, et cetera. I'm a little worried about the future of where our country is going. And I think that we really need to start preparing ourselves locally, especially after the debacle I've seen with how the coronavirus crisis was handled. God bless you, Al. I'll stop here.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, Mr. Al Bakri. This was really, you know, phenomenal heroic effort to really help get, keep these families back on their feet. And thank you also to the El Rancho for stepping up and providing housing for a month for these families.
Okay, here it is.
Tom, for your work on that. Are there any comments or questions from the council?
Comment?
Oh, yes. Vice Mayor Schneider?
Hi, thank you. And again, thank you, Mr.
Al Bakri.
Al Bakri and the Burlingame City Council. I think it would be an amazing idea to sit down with our emergency services group, with our Milbury cert group. I don't know how much or if you worked with the Red Cross. I'm a former Red Cross disaster volunteer. And they have as part of their mission to reach out to community groups who are partners. So if you feel like contacting me, I can connect you in with them. Their office for our county happens to be in Burlingame, almost on the Milbury border.
Oh, I'm very grateful. Well, because of this tragedy, we were in daily contact with the Red Cross. And I realized that the Red Cross at the end of the day is not a government. After 11 days, the Red Cross was, they said, that's enough. We've given you this. We, we went from the relief stage to the recovery stage. And that's when Mayor Havel was stepped up and your staff was able to locate that. But if we had not stepped up at that time, 11 days into the problem, we would have had, we would have had really to struggle. They would have been homeless. I mean, nine, at that point, about just about 12 days ago, only three families found housing. One in Sacramento and one in Dallas and theirs. But and it was the end of the mission for the Red Cross. What I'm saying is pass the Red Cross, which cannot continue to operate like a government, and pass the federal government. Let's say we have a mini crisis which does not call for a mega emergency call, does not get the state involved or does not get the federal FEMA funds involved. And we're in that limbo stage where we probably have five, six apartment buildings destroyed. That's a significant burden for the city, which is probably right there where God knows what the budget situation is, given that current status. How can we handle these cases for the prolonged way? I know as of tonight, five families still don't have the housing, even with the funds secured, even with Samaritan House promising them one month of lease. I just want to have this conversation because I know past 11 days, 12 days is the average for it across. That's what I had with all the top management. And we should be as a community, wealthy community, where an average apartment is 800,000 in Milbury. We should be able to be more responsive. And I truly believe from religious standing, from ethical standing, that we are as strong as our weakest link. And if we, and the stories I've heard from these people. A lady was a janitorial business. She had two employees. She actually had workers' compensation for her employees. Her employees, you know, laid off, but she kept on paying one of them for a month. Then she found she cannot continue. By the second month, she was in peril. And by the second and a half month, now she's homeless because of a fire. So when you look at these people, these are genuinely good, hardworking people. They're, they're our people. They're our city people. We ought to be able to provide for them in a place. And that's why we stepped up with this. And I'm hoping that I'm thinking, this is probably a happy ending story. How could we handle the next crisis, which could be 15 times as big? Are we ready? Do we have the resources? I'm not in your services department or emergency service, but I'd love to have that conversation on a regional level, on the state of Burlingame, Milbury, South San Antonio, which probably should be addressed even at a county level. I would love to learn more. I'm on a learner curve here, but I'm open and I'd love to meet with you in person. Just give me the time and Sal at supportlives.org is my email.
Excellent. And again, I'm also the city's rep to our county emergency services council. And what you're describing and what the residents have gone through is a second disaster in the middle of COVID. And I can definitely see where there are some needs for improvement there. So let's talk offline.
God bless you. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Councilman Pappen?
Yes, thank you again. So many organizations behind the scenes. The firefighters stepped up. The Lions also stepped up. I know my family's nonprofit as well. I agree with you. There used to be a way to put all the nonprofits together to help out. And I'm sure we can do it again, but thank you so much for your generosity and caring for all these people. We saw firsthand how needy they are and still are, even with this help. But thank you so much. Bless you. And hopefully, we can work through this. Thank you.
God bless you. Take care. Thank you for that.
Councilwoman Oliva?
I just wanted to say thank you as well. I think that when, it's so humane when somebody sees the need and steps up for the action. And that's exactly what you did. You brought it through your heart and made it work for us. And I'm very grateful and I'll look forward to working on anything else that you wouldn't find the need for help with. Because I would like to reciprocate. So thank you very much.
God bless you. I actually want to give a shout out to a sister in our community. Her name is Manar. And I don't know if she still served on some school board or whatever, but she really was able to activate a lot of your school boards in, specifically in Milbury. And we've gotten quite a lot, a large number of donations from $20 to $1,500 or $2,000 when the school board people. And that's what I'm saying is a system is as strong as the number of its connections. If you have as many more connections, that's when you can handle it. And again, I'm saying this is just 11 apartments. How about if we end up tomorrow with another Santa Rosa scenario? I know maybe that will call for state intervention or for this. But how about if it's in the middle where the state doesn't get involved and the federal government doesn't get involved? Do we have what it takes to handle such? And we're in a place that's very prone to catastrophe, as we're very well aware. So God bless you. I, this is what's so exciting. The business world, the philanthropic world, the school boards, the front streets towards, all came on together. And we really pulled it off together because I really, the total amount of days we really did the fundraising was just about seven and a half days. And so it was about, you know, $7,000 per day or something like, so that's, that's very amazing that we were able to do that. And thanks to the residents of Milbury, whoever is watching, thanks to everybody who donated. There is no donation that was too small. Support Life Foundation did not cut anything. As a matter of fact, we actually ended up paying fees and just to make sure we get them to that level. And then we involved some extra churches who brought in some other financial help and wherever. So I know each family ended up more with than just simply the $7,000. There was a lot of in-kind donations that were done, also through the nonprofit world. Again, I'm very grateful for this opportunity. I don't know, I don't know if you were able, you guys saw the campaign or were you gonna be able to play it, Ruben?
Yes, we have a short video. We do have a lot of business to move on to, but we do have a short video that we can play. Angela, do you have that?
I have, I have it if you want. I could, I could play it if you want me to share my screen.
I'm not in control of the screens here, so.
And can I, can I share my screen?
If someone, Tom or Angela has, oh, there we go. Okay. Yep, we see it. Okay, well, thank you. Very impressive video and certainly very effective in fundraising. And congratulations, you certainly blew out the.
Yeah, yeah, 55 was over 77. You're right. That's also the philanthropic world. We finished here at 41. And then the rest was really matched on when people really, when the word got out at the San Mateo Journal, we wrote about it. So really grateful, as again, you know, it's just a labor of love. And, and you know, we were able to go back and bring cherry boxes to the family a couple of weeks ago. Donna and the store in Burlingame did, what is it called? Nuts for Candy. Did incredible gift bags and we shared with the kids. Incredible, incredible. And the amount of joy every time we visit. So they were expecting us there almost every two days to bring some, something interesting or gift cards from Target and from Mothers for Poverty. As I said, many other organizations pulled in and were moved by this. So I'm very grateful for everything. God bless you.
I know you need some business. And Councilman, yes, one, one final comment, Councilman Lee, and then we have other business we do to move on to.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, I'm just incredibly grateful to everybody, the community. Thank you for organizing this event. I'll thank you to Anna Leva, who just, her heart just, just made a quick contribution that made a big difference to a lot of people. And also, I agree with you that, that we need to bring people together. We've been, it's been divisive for the last three, four years. And particularly now, where people are pointing pink fingers and people are getting hurt because of that. So I really appreciate what you're doing. And I think that it's people like yourself and others who are going to make this world a better place. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Bless you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Al Bakri. And we, you know, I look forward to continuing this conversation offline regarding, you know, resiliency, resiliency planning here. And I think you're right, that it really needs to be a county-wide effort to prepare against the next disaster here.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for all, all your help and congratulations on such a successful fundraising campaign.
Bless you, guys. Bless you. Thank you for taking the time. I know you're busy. Take care. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much. All right, so let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the agenda overview and staff briefing. Mr. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening and good evening to the city council. Tom Williams, city manager. Item number two on the agenda is calendar of events and report of bills and claims. Item number three then is approval of the meeting minutes for the regular, regular meeting of May 12, 2020. Item number four is oral reports from city committees and commission chairs, and there are no reports this evening. The next item is public communication. And that is for any member of the public to comment and share with the city council anything that's not already on the agenda. And speakers are limited to three minutes. Moving to the consent calendar, item number five is to consider a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to grant agreements to the support to No Break Community Television, MCTV, and First Amendment to their agreement for broadcasting video and channel management services by MCTV. And that would be for a three-month contract as we just rolled that existing contract forward for the first quarter of the new fiscal year. Item number six is quarterly investment schedule for the third quarter of the fiscal year 2019, 2020. Item number seven is to consider a resolution awarding a janitorial contract to NBC Custodial Services in the amount of $151,235. Item number eight is consider a resolution awarding a construction contract to HM Construction for the Milbury Transit Center to Spur Trail Connection Gap Closure Project. That's the Spur Trail Connection from Milbury Avenue to Hillcrest. Moving on to public hearing, we have one public hearing item this evening. That's item number nine. And it's to consider an ordinance, admitting article XXXI, which is 31 Development Impact Fees to Title 10, Chapter 10.05 of the Milbury Municipal Code. We are recommending that you hear the staff report, open up the public hearing, close the public hearing, waive the first reading, introduce the ordinance. Moving on to item number 10, under existing business, receive the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget report. Item number 11 is to receive the proposed operating capital budget for fiscal, fiscal year 2021 with provisions for cost containment and provide direction to staff. Item number 12 is a letter response to the California High Speed Rail 2020 Business Plan. Item number 13, under existing business, is an update on the Milbury Recreation Center project. And number 14 is recommendation of the artwork submitted by the Milbury seniors for utility box painting. Then moving on, we have no items under new business this evening. Then we move to council comments, Mr. Mayor, and then adjourn for the evening. Just real quick, a couple of updates countywide. There's 1,904 current cases in San Mateo County of COVID-19 virus. There are 82 deaths. In the city of Milbury, there are currently, there are currently 59 cases. And that was kind of a significant jump than what we had in the last report. And one of the reasons is the county is testing all long-term care and senior care facilities throughout the county. And in the city of Milbury, we had a, we had one of those facilities. There's 104 tests with 40 positive test results. And so that information was presented to us at the end of last week and got more information today. CDC and county health are on site assisting with that particular facility. So that's why we saw 40-person jump in cases. But it's contained and the briefing that I received earlier today, it's well under control. I'd also like to mention that there's significant COVID-19 testing that is available to meet the state guidelines. And actually, to meet those guidelines, San Mateo County, their goal is to administer 1,200 tests per day. Testing is now open to any person in San Mateo County. The website is projectbaseline.com. Again, projectbaseline.com. And anybody can go on that site and sign up to get tested. What's nice now are there, there are three testing locations throughout the county. Mondays and Tuesdays, it's in the city of San Mateo at the San Mateo County Event Center. And the hours of operation are nine to four. Wednesdays and Thursdays, testing is in Daly City. And that's at Jefferson Union High School District Office on 699 Cerro Monte Boulevard. And again, the hours are nine to four. And Fridays and Saturdays, testing is available in East Palo Alto at the YMCA at 550 Bell Street. So there are various locations throughout the county. Again, I encourage everyone to log on to projectbaseline.com and sign up to get tested. Also, Mr. Mayor, just real quick, the Milbury Skate Park and Tennis Courts are now open. They were open this past weekend. In terms of the Milbury Skate Park, it gets open for public use, but the capacity is limited to 10 people at a time. We ask skaters to limit their time to one hour if there are people waiting. They may continue if there's 10 or less people, obviously. And then we ask skaters to take responsibility for social distancing up to six feet. And masks are not required while skating, but certainly please wear masks while waiting in line or outside of the park. Also, the Milbury Tennis Courts are open over at Central Park. The rules are posted at the location, both at the skate park and the tennis court. But the tennis courts only use, can only be used by members of the same household at this point in time and used in a manner that ensures that all social distancing, face covering, and all other requirements, including the prohibitions against gathering and shared equipment are adhered to. And again, the specific health order can be reviewed at San Mateo County COVID-19 on their website. And then lastly, all of our online building permits are now open. As you recall, we were previously limited building permits, some middles for those for essential life and safety and for residential. But now, the city, under the new order by the governor and the state health officer, we are accepting all electronic submittals for tenant improvements and for remodels and new projects. And again, that can be found on our building, on our website, under our building department. Or you can contact our deputy building official, which is R. Herrera. So it's R. H. E. R. R. E. R. A. at ci.milbury.ca.us. So with that, Mr. Mayor, one other thing, as you could see, perhaps, we have signs throughout the city, just asking people not to litter. Since the shelter in place order has been issued, obviously, there's been an increase in the use of latex gloves and face masks and cleaning wipes. And we've seen a significant amount of litter, especially with face masks. So we're just asking and have a campaign, just to remind people, please don't litter. Please throw, throw your trash in the proper place and please don't flush them down the toilet. Uh, please throw, throw your trash, uh, in the proper place and, uh, please don't flush them down the toilet, uh, either. And, uh, everybody's doing a great job out there in Millbrae, so we really appreciate the effort. Um, just remind everybody not to litter. So with that, that concludes my report this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams, and.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to hand it over to our city attorney, Joan Casman. She has some updates on some actions that were taken today, uh, at, uh, the Board of Supervisors. So I'll hand it over to City Attorney Joan Casman.
Good to see you all. Um, I hope you're well. Um, I got notice from County Council today that the Board of Supervisors took two actions that I felt are of interest to Millbrae and our residents. And I wanted to have the opportunity to share them with you. And Tom has gratefully shared the podium under the City Managers' report with me for this purpose. Um, first of all, you recall that the Board of Supervisors enacted a countywide residential eviction moratorium for thirty days. The thirty days is coming up at the end of this month, and the board by action today extended the moratorium for another thirty days until the end of June. So the current moratorium will continue until June thirtieth, twenty twenty. In addition, the board took action to suspend the twenty-five cent grocery bag fee that has been in place for some time. Uh, this was at the request of, I've seen smiles on people's faces. This was at the request of, um, the Grocery Association, who was hearing from their retailers that they were feeling terrible, uh, required by law to charge a fee when, in fact, the shelter-in-place orders were not allowing customers to bring in our paper, our, our non-paper bags, our recyclable reusable bags, which has become for the environment a good thing and something that I think most of us have built into our daily routines. But the, the stores did not want to be charging this fee, and so they have suspended the fee for so long as the shelter-in-place orders are still in place. So those are the two actions that I thought, uh, you should know about because it affects, uh, our people who live in Millbrae. Thank you.
Mayor. Thank you, uh, Ms. Casman. And, um, just from my experience, none of the grocery stores have been charging that fee, whether they were permitted to waive it or not, um, since the shelter-in-place order went, went into effect.
Great. I mean, I think this.
On reusable bags.
Right. I mean, and this makes it clear that they're not in violation of any law, uh, when they have made the good choice not to charge the fee.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Williams, and, uh, on the, uh, you mentioned the facilities opening, um, such as the skate park and the tennis courts, and, and we would like to keep these facilities open. So this is just a, a reminder that if, you know, users do not follow the rules, the unfortunate consequence may be that these facilities are closed again. So please, you know, if you're going to use these facilities, which we, we would like them to be used, but with the rule, uh, followed. Um, Mr. Williams, I don't know if there has been any discussion with the school district about potentially reopening their, fields and, uh, yeah, school fields, such as, you know, Taylor Field has been fenced off, um, which takes away, uh, an important, you know, recreational, uh, amenity here in Millbrae. Is that something that can be requested of them?
Yes, Miss Mayor.
With it, and, and, and by the way, the city is still maintaining those fields, even though they are fenced off under the, uh, field and use agreement, which, uh, I'm not sure if that's the best use of our resources, but that's what's going on now. Um, let's see, Councilwoman Papin, she's bringing her hand up.
Um, I, oh, sorry. Yeah, I did. But along the lines of what the mayor just said too, can we inquire at the high school to open up their tennis courts as well? Um, that would be exceptionally helpful. There are many of them that have been locked just forever, and we are all paying those resources, uh, in our taxes. So it would be great if we could pursue that as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I forgot to lower my hand before.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you. Um, this is for, um, our city attorney. Millbrae has its own bag law, and my understanding is that the state could rescind the reusable bag ordinance as an emergency action. The county might be able to do it as an emergency action. But all cities that had ordinances that predated those actions might have to take individual action themselves. Now, we can ignore it and not enforce it, but, um, for Millbrae, and I think there were forty-one cities that enacted bans across California, don't quote me on the number, uh, prior to the state, that we may have to take our own action on that. And I smiled because the first week we went into lockdown, I wrote to the county saying, I worked on these bag ordinances. Um, but my community is very concerned, of course. So what, so anyway, that's one question to the city manager. In my world, we've already come up with, uh, instructions of how you can put your groceries back in your cart, and when you get them to your car, load them up in your reusable bags, and that way you can get them into the house. So we're a little bit afraid that the plastic associations are using COVID to, um, get rid of all single-use, uh, laws throughout the world. Actually, I'm on an international group on this. Uh, so there's a great deal of concern in replacing it with plastic, which is an oil-based product, which is a greenhouse gas generator, so, et cetera, et cetera. But we might want to check on our own. I am happy that we simply don't enforce it during this time, but I got specific directions from the grocers that Millbrae might have to do its own action.
Let me check. Let me check to that. Thank you, Councilmember.
Uh, Councilman Lee?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna, I was gonna say what, uh, the Vice Mayor has, has mentioned. Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, and that, uh, we look into just, uh, um, um, not charging the groceries at this time.
Okay. All right, let's move on to, uh, the approval of minutes, item number three. This is for the regular meeting of May twelfth, twenty twenty.
Make a motion.
Uh, I, I have some changes.
Yeah, um, Vice Mayor, I saw your email earlier today, and I think based on, unless, unless it's a fairly simple change, um, perhaps it can be brought back at a future meeting if it's a, a substantive.
You mean the minutes? You mean the minutes having a subsequent change, so just defer it? Um, I'm happy to.
Well, well, let's hear, let's hear what you're, um, suggested.
Well, well, some of them are, are, some of them are minor. For example, I said that the, uh, managed lane did no mitigation, not that they did mitigation, little things like that. However, on page, so and for the rest of council, I did send these comments to the city clerk and the city manager. One of them, I believe, is, well, two of them actually, I believe, are important, given the negotiations we're in with High Speed Rail. So on page five of that agenda item, that, let me make sure I'm in the right area. The first paragraph, it says that the city attorney said that tracks have to be added for ADA purposes. And to my knowledge, that has never come past to the council, nor have we approved that or known anything about it. So that particular, um, comment in the minutes concerns me because it may be taken as precedent. And that, that, and the fact that, that I also asked if, in the minutes, it says that High Speed Rail is doing this because they promised BART and Caltrain that they would create additional parking spaces. And I asked in that last meeting if that is true, those two agencies want this to turn, want this parking and want this surface parking lot. The answer was, we did not know at that time. And again, don't want to set precedence or don't want to set any impression in our minutes that we had prior knowledge of this or that we in any form agreed to this. We, meaning the city council.
So in my opinion, I think since it's, it's a fairly substantive change, um, and, and I think it would be best to maybe review the video, uh, from the meeting, uh, and bring this back at the, at the next council meeting.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you. And I thank you Angela's time. We, she and, um, city manager, city clerk Angela Lewis, and Tom Williams, and I spent some time trying to figure out if we could make it a simple change or a more substantive correction in the minute. So I appreciate that.
And we don't have a red line, uh, suggestion or anything like that. So I, I'd recommend deferring this to the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
That's fine with me. I, I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Lee, withdraw your motion.
Yeah, I read your line.
Okay, okay. All right, so let's move, um, to, let's see, item number five, or we'll move on to public communication. Um, it's an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item not on this agenda. Um, the, uh, the, uh, comments have been submitted by email to, um, city's, uh, public communication email line, and the comments of the speakers do not necessarily reflect the views of the city council or the views of the, um, city of Millbrae public as a whole. Um, do we have any, um, public comments submitted today?
Uh, yes, we have one item on public comment.
Okay, Ms. Lewis?
Um, the public comment is from Lou Sandrini. Mayor and council members, yesterday was Memorial Day, a day to acknowledge and honor our armed forces service members who made the ultimate sacrifice to protect and ensure our freedom and liberty. We are blessed with a Millbrae business resident who for several years has placed beautiful U.S. flags in front of houses to remind us of the meaning of this day. An altruistic and generous action that in and of itself displays great honor for these service members. I am certain everyone who saw those flags yesterday were reminded of the significance of the day. I think the city should recognize, thank, and honor the person who placed these flags. The flags express the city's honor, honor for those service members. Mayor Hollibur, I ask and hope you can waive no comments to public communications and so recognize and thank her. That person is Jean Jo. For Ms. Jo, I personally thank you, and I am sure everyone who got, got a flag does too. Mayor Hollibur, will you please thank her tonight? Lou Sandrini.
Okay.
End of the comments.
Okay, thank you, um, Ms. Lewis. And typically, we do not reply, um, to the public comments, uh, when, when they're provided, but, uh, we do note that comment. And, um, thank you, Mr. Sandrini, for bringing that to our attention. It was not something that we were, uh, I personally was aware of. Um, so let's move on now to the consent calendar. Uh, we have four items tonight, items five, six, seven, and eight. Um, do we have a motion for approval?
I like, I like to just take a, a motion to approve six, seven, eight, but I'd like to, uh, talk about number five.
Still moved.
Was that a second or a?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion from Councilman Lee and a second from Councilwoman Aliva on items six, seven, and eight. Um, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Schneider, is your hand raised in regards?
No, that's from the previous.
That's from previous. Okay, sorry. Okay.
Thank you. Sorry.
Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, Councilmember Aliva?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Hollibur?
Aye.
Consent calendar items six, seven, and eight are unanimously approved.
Okay, um, Councilman Lee, the comment, your question about, uh, number five?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, thank MTC for, MCTV for, I was hoping they would play a video. But if you give me later a chance, maybe I'll play the video about the, uh, take, they did the videos about census. Um, and they, uh, they also did a video on, um, encouraging people to take out food. Um, and I just thought that this might have been a great time for them to show the video, but, um, I guess it wasn't, uh, didn't have enough time. So, but it's on, um, it's on YouTube. Uh, if you look it up, I would encourage everybody to do that. Uh, MCTV is, is, uh, has transformed themselves quite a bit in the last few years. I think they've, they've, uh, have become more and more of an asset to the city, and I really appreciate that. I do have one question, though. Um, how does one person get access to the studio? Uh, is it, is it open to the public? Um, I understand it is, but how does a person get access to this, uh, using the studio?
They're representative from MCTV?
I don't believe we have a representative on MCTV right, uh, from MCTV on right now. But I believe in the past, um, what they've done is they've reached out to MCTV, uh, directly. But I will follow up with, um, MCTV and, um, find out what specifics are needed in terms of members of the public reaching out and, and getting in there, um, to use the, the station area. And I will report back to council or to the city manager, and the city manager can report back to you if that's amenable.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Hi, thank you. As a former board member of MCTV, I would only point out that, and I've spent quite a bit of time in their studio area, um, it might be difficult to, uh, disinfect each time. So we should make sure that we're following whatever the current COVID rules are at that time. But given the soft surfaces within that space, uh, there is a, a close, a harder surface space, but it's a lot of soft material. Just keep it in mind.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Okay, um, do we have a motion, uh, to approve?
We are approved. Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion. Sorry.
Second.
Second.
And like Vice Mayor Schneider seconded that. Um, can we have a? It was, it was pretty much a tie, but, um, can we have a, uh, roll call vote, please?
Uh, Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Councilmember Aliva?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Hollibur?
Aye.
The resolution approving and authorizing the execution of First Amendment to the grant agreement to support MCTV and the First Amendment for Agreement for Broadcasting Video and Channel Management Services by MCTV is unanimously approved.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to item number nine, ordinance, um, adding Article thirty-one to the Development Impact Fees, uh, to Title Ten, Chapter ten point oh five of the Millbrae Municipal Code. Um, do we have a, a presentation?
Yes, Miss Mayor, thank you.
Or shall, shall we open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, please open the public hearing, and that will capture this staff report. Thank you.
The public hearing is now open? Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, I would like to introduce our primary, uh, consultant, uh, and economist from the firm Harrison Associates, Mr. Nick Croll, uh, in association with our, um, public works director, but acting community development director, Mr. Keelim, to provide the staff presentation this evening.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of Millbrae City Council. Keelim, uh, acting community development director. Uh, we have tonight in front of you, uh, adding, uh, Article thirty-one Development Impact Fees to Title Ten, Chapter ten point oh five of the Millbrae Municipal Code. And I'd like to, I give a shout out to Jared Yang, uh, from the City Attorney's Office. Jared has been helpful in putting together the ordinance and helping with the residents to make this happen. And also I'd like to introduce Nick Croll and Megan Quinn from, uh, both are from Harrison Associates, uh, to help us, uh, put together the impact fee report, which you have. So tonight, we have several documents for you to consider. First is introducing, uh, and warrants, adding Article thirty-one to Title, uh, Ten, Chapter ten point oh five of the municipal code. And also the waiver first reading and accept, uh, receive for public comments. And then staff will bring the item back to the city council in two weeks. If there is no substantial change to the staff report and the impact fees, uh, report, and at the time, uh, in two weeks, we'll be adopting a resolution setting for the, uh, fees for each of the, uh, impact that the city is going to be implementing. And with that, I'd like to, uh, turn it over to Nick from Harris, and Nick is going to walk you through the, uh, impact fee report and how we come up with those, uh, six major components of the impact. Hey, Nick, do you like to share your screen or you want me to share?
No, I can do it. Just, hopefully this works. All right, does everybody see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm actually gonna have Megan kick it off, so, um, just do it that way.
Hi, everyone. I'm Megan with Harrison Associates. I'm just gonna start with an overview before I kick it over to Nick. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so as I mentioned, I'm Megan Quinn and, um, Nick Croll, we both worked on this. Um, the agenda for today, I'm going to give an overview of Development Impact Fees. Um, I know we spoke to most of the. Um, I know we spoke to most of the city council, um, and the mayor, um, but I'm going to give another overview just of development impact fees, as well as the overview of the report. And I'm going to kick it over to Nick and give it to him to talk about the methodology and calculations we used for our report, our nexus study. Um, we, for this nexus study, it's the development impact fees for our library, general government facilities, recreation services, public safety, park acquisition and facilities, and mobility. We'll talk about the next steps and then open it up for questions that either Nick or myself can answer for you. Um, again, so I know we've already spoke with most of you about development impact fees, but just another general overview for anyone that needs it or doesn't know as much about development impact fees. Assembly, their, um, Assembly Bill sixteen hundred is what set forth this legal requirement. It's a one-time fee for new development to mitigate their impact. It's important to note that these fees can only fund capital costs, they do not fund operation or maintenance, and the fees cannot fund existing deficiencies, it's only for new, um, new development. And they cannot, um, fund ongoing maintenance or salaries. They're fair share based on a rational nexus test, and they must meet annual and five-year recording, reporting requirements. They're also not a tax or a special assessment as a development impact fee. To give you some background on this report, the city hired Harrison Associates to prepare the development impact fee nexus study and to establish the city's development impact fee program. The city does not currently have any citywide development impact fees. The only impact fees there are right now are the specific, um, um, area development impact fee program for the, um, MSASP plan area. We worked really hard with the city to estimate costs, establish fees, and prepare the nexus study. Um, the fees are based on a, a few different methodologies. We picked whatever is the best methodology with information at hand. We use either an existing inventory facility standard or planned facilities methodology. Given that the city is largely built out, the fees will only apply to new development as all impact fees do, so that will mostly include any redevelopment parcels, vertical development, increased of density, or any new, um, undeveloped parcels that there are within the city. I'm going to hand over to Nick, and he's going to go over the summary of the maximum justifiable fee, as well as the methodology and calculations that we use, and then we'll both be available to answer any questions that you have, um, on this nexus study.
So this is the summary of the fee program as we've put it together. You can see that there's the different library facilities, general government facilities, recreation services, public safety, parks, mobility, and then an admin fee to cover the overhead comes with administering a fee program like this. So the fees are done on a per-unit basis for, uh, single-family, multifamily residential properties. Mixed use, uh, would qualify under either its residential component and its non-residential component, and then the non-residential is either based on the per squ, uh, per thousand square feet of building or in a hotel room, uh, every, per hotel room basis for a hotel project. And we're going to come back to this later, there's no one else to like, take notes or anything like that. So the first, uh, fee as a breakdown is the library fee, where we took the existing value of the library facilities minus the debt and this, uh, spread that value over the current service population for Millbrae, and you can see it comes out, um, the calculation comes to seventy-six dollars per capita, and then for non-resident, uh, employees, the fee is half of that, because the, uh, non, non-residents typically use, uh, facilities quite a bit less than people who live in the city, especially when it comes to libraries. So then that fee is calculated based on the estimated densities, uh, for either residents or for employees to come up with the fee per unit. I explained the methodology in this one, they all follow very, or some of, most of these follow a pretty similar, uh, design, but you can see how the, uh, fee is calculated. Next is the general government facilities fee. This uses the existing facilities such as City Hall, uh, the Corporation Yard, uh, facilities like that that are shared, but don't necessarily fall into a specific other category, and here it comes to three hundred and seventy dollars per capita, multiplied by the density as well, and you see the fee comes to about a thousand dollars per a single family, and about seven hundred and eighty-two dollars for a multifamily project, which is where most of your development is going to be. Next item is recreation services. This was slightly different, because the city of Millbrae is looking at a very large, uh, addition or a new facility for the recreation centers, since the last one, uh, is no longer with us, and the, uh, uses the value of the existing facilities minus the temporary, uh, temporary recreation center, and takes that divided by the existing service population, and then takes into account the cost of the future recreation center with all of the upgrades accounted for, and uses that divided by the service population with a special, um, deduction for the childcare facility as that's going to be available to, uh, city employees, not only city residents. So this one looks slightly different, because you see the cost per service population is a thousand twenty-one dollars versus, uh, for non-residential development, it's only about forty-nine dollars. And the fee comes to, um, which you can see, I don't have to necessarily leave the slide for you. The next item is for public safety. This again uses existing inventory, this pays for things like the, uh, police facilities, uh, within City Hall, um, the fire facilities, uh, for the stations, and it's designed to be able to offset if there are any future costs for expansion, because I know there's some items that are looking to be, um, added in the future, and you can see there is a small, uh, difference with this one, because there's an overlap with the MSASP. Because they have their own facilities, uh, or their own, uh, fire impact fee, they're going to pay a slight difference versus the rest of the citywide. The total fee will end up being the same, but they get a credit for their portion that's paid directly to the MSASP. The next item is the largest, uh, item, so it's going to get broken down a little bit more, it's the park acquisition and park construction fee or facilities fee, and this goes off of the cost of land, the cost of constructing a park, and then multiplies that by the updated general plan standard of three acres per thousand residents, and it's broken down to where it's about nineteen thousand dollars per resident in the city. This does not apply to non-residential development. And using that same, uh, it's the land component and the construction component divided by the estimated occupant density in each unit, and the fee comes to, um, it's forty-five thousand five hundred dollars for the land and eight thousand eight hundred dollars for the construction of the park facilities, coming to a total of fifty-four thousand for a single family and forty thousand for a multifamily unit. The next item is mobility fee. This is designed to cover things to make the city more walkable and bike friendly. It doesn't, since you are a built-out city, there aren't a lot of facilities for actual, uh, new roadways, there's not going to be a lot of lane miles added, but it is, you know, the goal of the city to become more walkable and more, uh, non-motorized vehicle friendly. And these fees, you see the calculation here, come to about eighteen hundred dollars for a single family and a thousand dollars for a multifamily unit. This is using the future, uh, projection forward, I know everyone on council has already seen the list of planned facilities, and it's available in the nexus study, um, to see what is estimated to be funded going forward. And then we did a comparison with the neighboring jurisdictions, so you can see where we fall versus some of the neighbors. As she compared to, like, Daly City, in Belmont, we coming in below, right about the same price as San Carlos, um, and more expensive than cities like Burlingame, and, and you can see the averages at the bottom are available, so you can get an idea of where we fall compared to other cities. And here is the comparison for multifamily development. And I can jump back to the slides if anyone has any questions on them. I know there's a lot of numbers here, and it's.
This is Tom Williams, sorry to interrupt and interject here, but.
No, you're, you're perfectly fine.
I want to make a quick comment that it's really hard on a comparison to really mix apples to apples on something like this, because so many cities have different ways to collect development impact fees, or, for example, Burlingame is lower in this chart than what they actually are, because, Nick, correct me if I'm wrong, Burlingame under what we've compared here only collects for police and fire and library.
Um, yeah, and their, their park fee is like five hundred dollars.
Okay, so.
So they, they don't have a Quimby standard like every other city you're basically going to run into, they don't have an established amount of parks that are supposed to be there. I don't know how they make that work, but they seem to. Maybe it's something I need to call and ask, because it's a, maybe a new trick I can learn. And then just to give you, uh, a look at the numbers again, so you can see the breakdown of where all the costs come from, so no one had to get their pens out, hopefully. So I don't know if anyone on, um, but, uh, any members of council had any questions, I know there's a lot of numbers I just threw at you, and I might have breezed through it, so I apologize in advance.
All right, thank you.
The, uh, next steps, the next steps we have to go forward, um, in two weeks, uh, it looks like we're going to be waiving the second reading, or the first reading of the ordinance, so we're just going to be adopting that tonight. The resolution is planned to be for two weeks, so I guess the slide's a little bit out of date. And then there is a future, uh, discussion for additional fee items, as well for affordable housing, um, water supply, other things that might be relevant, just to make sure everyone's aware of what's, what's coming.
All right, thank you, uh, very much. Vice Mayor Schneider?
Mayor, first, uh, I tended to write my comments based on the first part of, of item nine, so the staff report, and then the actual developer fee. I may sound a little confused here as I flip between the two, but I'd like to start with just a couple of assumptions that I don't quite understand. Um, throughout your evaluation, you're assuming fifty single-family dwellings could be built over a particular timeframe, and yet in the description in the report, we basically don't have a lot of parcels left, and those parcels are along the transit corridor, and I find it highly unlikely we'll be developing single-family dwelling. So where are those, the revenue, the parks revenue, for example, is greater for a single-family home than a multifamily home, but we don't have that much land. Where are the fifty houses? Single-family houses?
If, uh, i- is Roscoe on the call?
Uh, yes, Roscoe is on the call. The fifty, uh, fifty single-family, uh, part of plan is an estimate based on what we review of our zoning, uh, zoning map. We noticed, we estimate there are about fifty lots total throughout the city, so, but those are where the number comes up. And the multifamily, uh, we are using two thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven multifamily units, and those are primarily along El Camino, all the high-density future developments, want growth, that we are anticipating as part of the specific plan, and that's how the numbers come up with, but we, we got that number.
I just did not realize that we have actually fifty parcels that could build single-family homes, or perhaps if we're forced to duplexes and quadplexes. That's a little bit scary, given what's happening in Sacramento, and the ability to put in higher density in our single-family neighborhoods, that's an aside. Um, the other thing.
Well, the city has two or three of those, uh, units that we're trying to sell right now for recreation.
That is correct, yes. We, we got two, I'll take them lots.
Big and lots, possibly up to three houses.
And so I didn't know if that meant.
Sorry to interrupt.
And if row houses become a multifamily ha, project as opposed to a single-family, I don't think we need that level of detail. It just confused me, because I didn't believe we had space for fifty homes, so.
And fifty is an estimate, and it could be subject to change, um, like, with, with all these items, it's kind of a snapshot in time, it's our best guess going forward. I don't know for a fact we're going to develop fifty single-family homes, and I, I can't guarantee it's going to be, any of these numbers are accurate, they're all estimates based on the best available data.
And then in the staff report, on page two, under analysis, it talks about intensity of existing, unless they're intensifying the existing use, um, when you're renovating a structure, we've had a great number of single-family homes that have been greatly intensified, and sometimes we've caught them and made them pull out the seven additional bathrooms and the seven bedrooms on Poplar Avenue, but, um, I, I just, I would love to see intensity of use put into terms that we normal people might understand. What does that mean in terms of a single-family dwelling? Is it turning a two-bedroom to a six-bedroom? That's okay, but two into an eight-bedroom isn't okay, or will trigger fees? Where, where the, do those trees get fig, uh, triggered?
So, the intensification of use is adding additional, uh, square footage to a commercial development, adding additional units. So the idea of taking down a one-story retail on El Camino, putting in a mixed-use center that goes six floors of condos above a floor of retail with a floor of office, that's a much, much more intense use. Uh, adding an additional, you know, a, a, a addition on the back of a home does not trigger a development impact fee.
Then I think that that's a problem. I actually would think some of the single-family homes are so greatly being expanded that there should be a trigger. If you're going to be a house that might comfortably fit five people and you're suddenly fitting ten, that's five more people's impact on our parks, that's five more people's impact on our roads. Why are we not catching that?
These are, we're using census, census data to get our population numbers, so it is the total city population divided by the whole total city, uh, number of units, so we can't take into account if someone lives in a five thousand square foot house by themselves, they are still being charged as if there's two-point-eight people living in that property. Or if there's four people living inside a two-bedroom, a two-bedroom nine-hundred-square-foot house, that, i- we have to just use averages and assumptions to make these things work.
And that was another problem I had when I read through the, how you qualified census data. To me, it's not a true reflection. I looked at my one block, and of the twelve or so houses, only three of them have two people living in them, all the rest have five to ten people living in them. So I, I just, I question that, that assumption in there. If that assumption is required of us, simply because we, we are, we exist in the Bay Area, I won't argue the point, but I think that there's some faulty assumptions in that. I think our community is going towards multi-generational, meaning at least three generations per household, um, and/or a, a cousin or a friend staying in the house, given what's been going on in terms of the cost of housing, and even a senior living at home, if they've got a hip housing in there, they've got more people in there. So that two-point, I was a little, I'm pleased to see two-point-eight instead of one-point, whatever it was, I think, in the specific plan, but I, I'm not sure that's a real reflection of where we are.
Well, the new census data will be available, um, hopefully sometime, um, in the next eighteen months, and at that time, if the, uh, data materially changes, we can absolutely update this to reflect new information. All we have to go on is the information's available and the census is the best, uh, data available.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I remember we had this discussion quite extensively during the MSASP fees, and that was the best data that we had, was two-point-one, uh, residents per multifamily and two-point-eight-five per single-family. I, I remember there was some discussion about, are we using the, you know, why does the, um, EIR for the specific plan use two-point-eight-five? Well, it turns out that was the citywide average, which is mostly based on single-family, uh, residential, whereas two-point-one was the, from the American Community Survey Census, uh, the most accurate data we had for multifamily.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do remember that now, but it, it just, I just was going through the assumption and making sure that we're using twenty-twenty assumptions without even looking at the fact now that the state is expecting to be leveling off on population growth, whether that has anything to do with COVID or not, uh, that that's one of the trends. One other really dumb one, and, and it's something that has been bothering me with other hats that I wear, transportation agencies seem to get to do whatever they want, and the decisions that they make, their land use decisions affect Millbrae in terms of mobility. If you look at Burlingame's recent approval of one, and I believe a second in the, the rate, of putting in high-density housing on Rollins Road right on our border, with the assumption that they'll use the transit-oriented site, so yeah, it makes sense, but most likely those people will be driving on our roads and possibly going to our parks, and possibly on our spur trail, and things like that, and, a- and then to use another, and yet there's no, um, developer fees we get from projects right on our borders. San Francisco moves the runways four hundred and fifty feet closer to a neighborhood, and yet no mitigation was done to the increased noise in that neighborhood, because they, they seem to live in their own special world, these transportation agencies. Is there any sign around the country in the work that you do that other agencies have to, have to pay for that? We have become a place where everybody drives through us to get to the various transportation agencies, we still have to maintain the roads, and nobody pays us for their privilege of opening a train station or expanding SFO, or Burlingame putting all their density on our border.
So unfortunately, yeah, that is a, it's a common side effect. So unfortunately, yeah, that is a, it's a common side effect with, especially cities that are butted by completely built-out cities like you are. You know, if you're in rural Placer County, it's not such a big deal because you're kind of out on your own, but you guys definitely are in a unique situation. Unfortunately, you just, it's, it's a side effect of where you're located and what your city looks like. You, you don't have the authority to charge within the city for another city, another city's development. There are regional, a lot of areas are going to regional-wide fees down in San Diego where I am. We have Sandag where they are in charge of all of the regional transportation items, and they try and, you know, coordinate between the different jurisdictions to make it more streamlined. I know that A-BAG has all kinds of information available, but they don't, they don't charge an area-wide fee, and there's not, unfortunately. And that, that would be your, your best route to go if you thought that there was something that needed to be more equitable split, would be through an agency like A-BAG or county-wide fees.
Is there a way in this document that we can capture that inequity, even if it means that it's something we have to fix in the future?
Nick, if I can jump in here real quick. So, so the purpose of, the purpose of this fee is for new development, right? It does not impact existing development, and you cannot charge this particular fee for operations or for anything that is deferred maintenance. So, so new development can't pay for existing deficiencies, and what this does is new development pays its fair share, so the existing residents and population aren't burdened with the cost to have to pay for new development in the future. And, and so that's kind of the overall, as Nick had mentioned earlier in his presentation. So, you can't collect for maintenance in this fee, you can't control overcrowding of households. If there's a, if there's a triplex, for example, that's demolished and a sixplex is built, then we will give credit to the units that exist and charge the three new units, not all six units. So, the discussion about the intensity of development on a single-family home, if more rooms are added, that's a different tool in our toolbox that, that we need to look at, because we can't do it with this particular AB-1600 fee process.
Okay. And the city manager and I already had a discussion of where climate action fees, climate resiliency fees, the art fee. I'm really disappointed that it's not in this set, but I understand it'll be coming back to us in September.
It's going to be based on, again, information available. We could definitely make sure that that's an item we address, but with the water fee, it's going to be coming in the next round.
And I need to be, on the water fee, it's both really for reclaimed water, correct, Nick? That's what we're-
Yeah, yeah. It's water supply that's basically built around the reclaimed water system, or the water recycling system, that's going to be added to increase the city's overall capacity for water.
And so just real quick on that, we know that our water rates, you know, how, what the, how high our water rates are, this type of fee then will help keep water rates down because water rates won't have to pay for existing deficiencies as new development occurs over the years. New development will pay its fair share.
Then sort of my last overall one, as we develop more, we are developing some spaces that are, at present, not asphalt. So we are losing soil that absorbs water, vegetation and trees that absorb carbon, and absorb noise, and we are hugely impacted from five different transportation, or six, transportation entities on noise, and trees play an important role. And if I look at the most recent, when I watched Planning Commission meeting last week, their intent is to cut down certain trees and put in palm trees, which don't do, don't do much for any of those activities. So again, it's my frustration that in this report, we don't have anything that is going to reflect the heat island that we're, we're growing every time we build a new building, or anything like that. And if other cities haven't gotten there, we need to be there. Other cities don't get hammered by the noise that we get hammered by every transportation agency and all of their growth plans, and Burlingame's growth plans.
So I, I think if we can keep this focused on what we have in front of us, because we're kind of getting off this public hearing item, which is the AB-1600 impact fees.
Mayor, can you please let somebody else speak as well, please?
Yes, one, one moment, please.
I think those are different issues, you know, that we need to address through different agencies.
Okay, yeah, I think in terms of, you know, landscaping and permeable, you know, types of, of ground to absorb rainwater, that's something that I think could best be addressed through our planning code and our zoning code and our building code. And maybe not, I mean, I think they should be putting it in place, and it shouldn't be something that we collect an annual fee for. And as for, you know, development in Burlingame and other cities, there's, I, I think that cuts both ways, because, you know, you can also make the argument, well, they're putting all the new development in Millbrae right on the Burlingame border, and, and there's nothing that prevents Millbrae residents from going to use the parks. I, I use public parks in other cities. There's nothing that prevents us using parks and roads and other infrastructure of other cities. So, you know, I, I think that's something that's not really relevant to this, this report here.
Actually, Mayor, just to connect you, other cities, they do require their parks, some of their parks are set aside for city residents only. I'm not advocating for that.
There's, there's one, yeah, there's one example in Palo Alto I could think of. I don't believe there are any in San Mateo County. Okay, Councilman Oliva?
Yes, I just wanted to bring us back to what we're voting on here and making to look at the first reading to go through, and these are impact fees for new development. And new development, even, if you could help me out here, city manager, even when it does come to the table for the new development, it's still negotiable. So we're just comparing and upgrading our development fees and looking to see where we want to be in terms of what needs to be done so we can, we can generate some income for our city.
That's great. This is what, what Harris has put forth is the cost that each new unit will have on our ability, or our need to build infrastructure to support that new population.
So, I mean, let's stay focused. Let's get something done here, please.
Yeah, there are some, crafted in the ordinance, and Nick step in here if I, if I misspeak, but crafted in the ordinance is through the development agreement process and through council action, depending on the type of project, the scale of project, the mix of residential and commercial, the type of commercial that it is, if it's, if it's truly retail. Mayor and I had this discussion earlier today, and it generates revenue through the development agreement process in this particular ordinance. It allows the city council to have some flexibility on fee collections per land.
That, that was very clear in the paperwork that we received. Thank you.
So if I might comment just quickly. So first off, first of all, today, what's before the council is an ordinance that sets out the framework, the general rules for imposing impact fees. So the, these are things like the reporting, how the reporting is going to happen, when the fees are going to be collected, the, what kinds of structures are going to be exempt, and, and what kinds of credits are available, things like that. So these are generally applicable rules, but we're not actually imposing any fees tonight. So once this ordinance, so we will, if all goes well, adopt this ordinance in two weeks, and at that time, by a separate resolution, we will begin imposing actual fees. So we, we've prepared the, the fee resolution for your review tonight, so that, that we can take into consideration any comments that you may have on that resolution. But, but what is before you tonight is, is the ordinance that sets the general rules, not the fee, or not the resolution that is actually imposing the specific fees. The, the second thing is that I, I think Councilmember Oliva mentioned that, that these fees are somewhat negotiable in, in the development process, and that is true, that, that for certain developments, we may end up negotiating some of these fees. However, what the, the resolution, which, which will, and what the resolution does, is the resolution sets the maximum amount of fee that we can charge, because that has to be linked to the, the impact of the development. So i- if we believe, for example, that a particular development is going to have some really interesting open spaces or public spaces that are going to be available to the city, we may, we could choose to say that, well, you're, you're going to do this thing for the city, and so we think that we should, we should waive some of the, the parks fees, or the recreation fees in light of this other, these other benefits that you're bringing to the city. But the, the maximum amount that we can charge is, is going to be set forth in, in the, the resolution.
And I, I'd like to make a motion to approve this reading.
If, if this is seconded, I have to vote no, because-
Well, we, we need to close the public hearing first before we can, we can move-
I want to counter-
Move to close, no. I see two public comments on this, just, just-
Yes, let's go to Councilman Lee, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question about charging, is, is the fee also including road repair in the, in case when, when construction causes damages to roads, or causes excessive dust and other nuisances? Is that factor in?
The answer is-
It's not. These fees, fees cannot be collected for maintenance, and typically we have a condition of approval on new development projects, and if there's any damage that's done, and these projects have to actually secure it with a bond, a construction bond, they have to go back and repair anything that they've damaged. Those, those are standard conditions on new development projects. Those are conditions that exist in both TOD2, TOD1.
Okay, understand. Okay, good. I just want to make sure we, we do, because in the past we haven't, and then we get stuck with bad roads. So, the other thing was, oh, just a comment, just want to make sure that everybody understands that, people listening at home, that these are impact, these are fees, called impact fees, they, again, I'm going to reiterate that these don't, these don't, when they build a building, we don't collect money for maintenance and like fire or police services. This is only for buying like a fire engine or building a road, access road, but we have to maintain those roads, and we have to maintain those, we have to hire staff. So along with this, we have to also find a way to offset the cost of new building. I'm not trying to say we shouldn't build buildings, but I was just saying we should also plan ahead. Thank you.
Mayor?
Okay, let's go to a public comment, please.
Okay. There are three items of public comment. The first item is from Stephen Green. "I believe there are significant flaws in the law firm's methodology for determining the development impact fee schedule. The most general issue is the standard for determining cost. Generally, the report is totaling the assessed values of cities' property, dividing it by the current number of residents, and then using that number to determine a per-resident basis. I have a number of issues with this. For one, the implication is that this capital was all acquired using tax money paid by residents, when even a quick glance at the Millbrae budget shows that significant portions of the city's revenues come from outsiders. More than a quarter of the current budget is paid by hotel visitors. Second, even if you accept the fully funded by residents thesis, these projects were not paid via a one-time fee, but rather through taxes and fees incurred over decades of residency. If such taxes and fees were previously sufficient to pay for existing residents, why is it that no, why is that no longer the case? And third, the clearly distorted assessed values of properties makes this metric of values worthless. For example, our beautiful city hall is valued at $2 million, but the temporary recreation center is valued at $3.5 million. I have extensive issues with the use of the ITE manual for estimating trip generation, since their numbers are often based on small sample sizes in suburban contexts, and in all likelihood don't reflect Millbrae's built environment, but those would require too much time to go into. UCLA professor of urban planning Donald Chu has written extensively on this. But the most glaring issue is the methodology for the park fee. This, the introduction to this report states that there are 3.6 vacant acres in the city of Millbrae, yet it is stated policy that the city maintains three acres of park for every 1,000 residents. How would the city plan to do this in a meaningful and effective way once there is no vacant land remaining in Millbrae? It is, is it official policy that we only employ eminent domain to acquire new parks every time our population increases? This, this methodology either doesn't take itself seriously or is fully constructed with the intent of chilling new residential development and/or filling the city's coffers by relying on large injections of cash from wealthy developers. The city is very proud about its commitments to affordable housing, but just with this geological park fee alone increases the cost of every new-built unit in Millbrae by 40,000. If the city is even half-serious about encouraging affordable housing, an exemption should be at least offered for de-restricted affordable projects. But the far better path forward seems to be the fee scale used by Burlingame, which is under 20% of what Millbrae is proposed, proposing to achieve largely by ignoring the ludicrous park fee." Okay, the second item is from Brian Pianca of Wood Partners. "Dear Mr. Lem, as you may know, Wood Partners is in the feasibility phase for the possible redevelopment of the Office Depot site in the Millbrae, in the city of Millbrae. We are trying to determine the viability of a mixed-use project on this important site and have concerns with respect to certain elements of the development impact fee program, the program authorized by Harrison Associates. We ask that the city reconsider the following two elements of the program that would significantly help the viability of our potential project and other projects citywide. First, park and open space impact fees typically allow for offset credits for both common space, example, outdoor amenities, roof decks, courtyards, et cetera, and private open space in a project, example, decks, terraces, and balconies. Our proposed project contemplates generous common and private open space, as well as a facade between our building and the Safeway parking lot that will provide a much-needed pedestrian-friendly enhancement to the north side of the downtown. In the interest of level-setting with other Bay Area jurisdictions and promoting the viability of important Millbrae developments, we respectfully request that the city consider establishing a fee credit offset for common and private open space as part of the program. We would also like to urge the city to reconsider the imposition of commercial impact fees on mixed-use projects. As you can imagine, the retail industry as a whole has been dramatically impacted by the current COVID-19 pandemic. The industry is not expected to recover to pre-pandemic levels anytime soon, and retail rents do not and will not support the costs to construct. Mixed-use projects are fundamentally, are fundamental to creating a vibrant and walkable downtown area, and we hope the city looks to creative ways to support their viability. Put simply, the imposition of the commercial impact fees on retail, which is largely being provided at a loss, does not make mixed-use projects financially feasible. Therefore, we recommend that the commercial impact fees be restricted to commercial buildings and waived for mixed-use projects already subject to extensive impact fees for their residential units. We are eager to partner with the city and help advance the desired goal of a vibrant, walkable, beautiful downtown. Thank you for your consideration of modest ways to facilitate mixed-use development through the city, throughout the city, and to help our project move forward. Sincerely, Brian Pianca." And the final comment is from Tram Nguyen. "Dear Mayor and City Council members, we understand that the adoption of an ordinance for development impact fees is inevitable, but these fees are exceedingly high and punitive, especially as compared to our immediate neighboring cities, Burlingame, San Bruno, San Mateo, and South San Francisco. The proposed Millbrae development impact fees for single-family, $64,701, and multifamily residential development, $47,338, are more than double of these four closest neighboring cities. Average single-family, $28,226; multifamily, $21,640. These brutally high fees would simply halt and discourage any development that may be starting or continuing during this COVID-19 pandemic and target small businesses that are family-owned. Only large developers would be able to support these exorbitant fees, while small and family-oriented businesses will not. These fees will increase rent, property values, and for small businesses to leave Millbrae, leaving a less diverse community with only single-family homes and large developments. We are hereby requesting a categorical reduction of these development impact fees, as well as consideration for additional exemptions from the city council. These development impact fees, along with other fees, will make it difficult, will make it difficult for local families and small businesses to remain in Millbrae. Our current family-owned property- Our current family-owned property and project at 480 El Camino Real, Millbrae, has an ongoing application since 2015 with planning commission approval since 2017, but is still continued for a pending city council public hearing for entitlement approval. The proposed development impact fees will result in an additional approximate $500,000 cost to our project along with already paid and other pending fees. This is a financial burden that we cannot, that we cannot survive with already ongoing effects of COVID-19 pandemic crisis. Thank you for your consideration in this crucial matter and in opposition to the proposed ordinance adding Article 31 Development Impact Fees to Title 10, Chapter 10.5 of the Millbrae Municipal Code. Huay Man Hong and Tram Nguyen, owners of 480 El Camino Real. That completes the public comment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lewis, for reading this. Can we have a, just a comment on the methodology that was alluded to in the first, in the first public comment? Do we have a response from that, either from our legal counsel or from Harris?
The three main points I saw, oh, go ahead, Jared.
So I guess I can speak to the, the level of service methodology, the less so to the valuations. So I know that the legal, the level of service methodology, which we use on a number of the fees that values the existing assets and then, and then determines what we would need to charge new development to maintain the existing level of, that same level of service, has been upheld by appellate courts in California. And so we can be confident that, that, that methodology is sound.
Also, a major point, it's not using the assessed value. It's using the insurance value that was done for the, it was a county-wide insurance program. So it's not based on just whatever an assessed value may be. And then the value of the city hall is partially allocated between police facilities and city facilities because they do share them. So that's why, so it's not just $2 million. The actual fee is allocated based on square footage between those two items. So it's not just $2 million. If that's the, the other methodology items you might want to, he referenced a problem with the ITE trip generation study, which is, it's an industry standard model. Is it perfect? No. It's the best model that's available, though. And it's another, another instance of we have to go with the best information available without an actual traffic study for each project that comes up. That's the best model that we have available. And then the park fee methodology, that's based on what the recent land transactions are in the county. And that is the cost of land. We can't, you, I'm sure you're all very aware what the cost of land is in the Bay Area. And especially in a landlocked city, that is part of it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just a quick example, right? Let's say our population from new development grows 6,000 people, right? And our level of service is three acres per thousand. That's 18 acres. And on the low side, at 5 million an acre, you know, you're looking at $90 million. And if you just go, you know, a little bit more, say, say 6 million an acre, you're, you're up at about 110, 108 million dollars. And the point here is, existing residents should not pay for that new growth. The collection of these development impact fees on that 108 million dollars should come from new development. And that's what we're trying to achieve here. Because if we miss this and new development doesn't pay its fair share, we can never make up existing deficiencies. And so that's the window of opportunity that we have here and why this is so important. And if there's misunderstanding by, you know, some members out in the public, then, you know, we'd be happy, obviously, to address that in more detail. And another thing also is that these development impact fees, sometimes it is an incentive then developer to build onsite public open spaces and parks and that type of thing on their project to get credit. And that's something that I think the developer that's looking at the Office Depot site, we've been talking with them about creating some nice urban, you know, plazas and open spaces that they're amenable to. And, and of course, if that, if they build it, then we don't have to collect the fees. We provide a credit for the public improvements that they actually build. These fees are collected when a developer's, you know, says, no, they're not going to build it. They're getting, you know, they would rather pay the fees. Quite frankly, I'd rather have the development community build the facilities and us have to collect the fees and then build it at some time. So sometimes incentivize the developer to actually build, build, build the improvements themselves.
Okay. And is that included in the ordinance?
Yeah, so there's a credit if, if there's a park space, you know, public park space, plaza space, water line, sewer line, and the developer builds it, then we don't collect the fees.
I think that would be something that we would write, that would be a fee-specific provision. And it would be specific to the parts acquisition fee. And so I think that would be more appropriately in the, in the resolution. I think there, there are some credits in the ordinance. Let's see. Yeah, so I, there are, there are credits for construction of facilities in, in the ordinance and then we can, yeah, and we can work with the, work in the resolution to make sure that, that these concerns are addressed. If that's something that the council wants to see in, in the park fee. I also did want to add that as, as we're talking about what kinds of metrics we're using and how we're, we're valuing different facilities or how we're, how we're measuring different impacts. I think the courts who have reviewed these fees acknowledge that this is something of an inexact science. And so the, we don't have to have the impacts measured down to the decimal point. And the, what they're looking for is just a reasonable relationship between the, the type of, of impact caused by the development and the, the fee that we're imposing and the amount of the fee that we're imposing and the degree of the impact caused by the development. So there is some amount of, so we do want to get as close as possible. But there is some amount of flexibility as, as to the, the amounts, the fees and how we're measuring things.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, it's like Vice Mayor Schneider, one final comment and then we'll move on.
I am sorry. I do believe that assumptions are absolutely critical because they, that's the basis of what it all costs and then it's divided by units. My questions are part mobility and part safety. Did you include the cost of a pedestrian and bicycle bridge over 101?
The answer is yes, that is included in the mobility section of the impact fee report.
You've made me very happy, Key. Thank you. And in terms of emergency, did we include any of the flood or is all of this coming back when we do climate change?
Correct. Yeah, it will be the phase two, the second phase of the project.
Okay. Then a lot of my questions have to go with, with everything related to GHGs.
Okay.
Make motion to close public hearing.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion from Councilman Lee and a second.
Papen, second.
Councilwoman Papen. Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva. Councilmember Oliva.
Aye.
Aye. Vice Mayor Schneider.
Yes.
Mayor Oliver.
Aye.
The, the public hearing is closed.
Okay. And just one final clarification. So this would be returned to us at the next council meeting. As, as you had mentioned, that there also would need to be a resolution adopting the actual fee amount. Would that be done concurrently then? Can that be done?
That, that is correct. That will be done on the night of June 9. Staff will bring back the ordinance.
Okay, concurrently with the second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
I'd like to make, sorry, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion from Councilman Lee, a second from Councilwoman Oliva. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
Yes.
Mayor Oliver.
Aye.
The city council has unanimously waived the first reading and introduced an ordinance adding Article 31 Development Impact Fees to Title 10, Chapter 10.05 of the Millbrae Municipal Code.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item number 10. The General Fund Financial Report for the period ending April 30, 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our interim finance director, Emily Boyd, for the presentation.
Sorry, I was muted. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is Emily Boyd. I'm the interim finance director. This first presentation that I have this evening is regarding the general fund budget in the current fiscal year that we are currently in. This fiscal year ends on June 30 of 2020. The report before you is the financial data as of April 30, 2020. Staff's recommendation moving forward is that at the second meeting of each month, the council received this report regarding financial transactions in the general fund as of the last of the preceding, the last year of the preceding month. So in the future, we're recommending that this report go on the consent calendar. And if you have any questions, of course, you can address those to us. So basically, what we're looking at is we're looking at in this first column of numbers, the 2020 amended budget. And that budget was, that's the budget that was adopted last June as the original budget for the year. It was amended in November of 19 and amended again in March of 2020. The second column is the actual as of 4/30/20. When I say actual, I mean actual checks that we've written and money that we put in the bank, plus on the expenditure side, anything that we have encumbered. And an encumbrance means that we're committed to pay this amount. We just haven't written the check yet. The next column is the remaining balance. And then the last column is percentages of the remaining balance of the budget remaining. We are at 83% of the year trend fired. We have 17% of the year still to go. So our remaining budget should be right around 17% if we are on target with the budget. This last column over here is the worst-case scenario that we presented to you last month when we tried to estimate what the impact of COVID-19 is going to be on our, our economy. You'll notice here that the major impacts are going to be on sales tax and TOT, as you know. When you look at the sales tax line, the percent budget received date is, or the remaining budget is 34%, where we should be at 17%. So we're not going to collect what we thought we would on the budget. And TOT also is the remaining budget at 30%, where we should have be around 17%. But once again, we know we're not going to receive what we originally budgeted. And over here, in the worst-case scenario, we have some projections for how much we think we're going to get when the year is completed.
Emily, can I real quick, Emily, on the sales tax, on the actual year-to-date, that lags a little bit, though, does it not?
It does. Yes, it lags a couple of months behind. So that number may be improved. It might, we might not come in at the end of the year at 34% behind budget. It's probably going to be less than that by the time we get through all of our actual. The other revenues are listed here. I'm not going to go through each line at, at, like, each line individually. See that the total other revenues we have remaining, 13.9% to collect. So we are on, on target there. Expenditures here are by department. These include, it's important to note that these include both the operating cost and capital cost in order to keep this report concisely combine those two. And you'll see here, if you look at the total expense, it's down here at 30.5% remaining in the budget. So we're coming in considerably under budget in, in our expenditures. And that's primarily due to a couple of things. One is that when we saw this coming, we put in place some spending freeze. And we've taken other measures to reduce the amount that we're spending out of an abundance of caution because we don't really know what's going to happen and what the final impact of COVID-19 is going to be on the city. Something important here to note, when you look at the net revenues, revenues minus expense, the original budget had a negative 8.1 million. But that 8.1 million consists of transfers out for capital and capital expenditures. The city had, over a number of years, accumulated approximately $22 million in available fund balance. And that means the fund balance that is available to be spent. That doesn't include the reserved fund balance. And in the last couple of years, the city has been returning that, reinvesting that money in the city through its streets and capital improvement program. And so when we see a negative number here, that's because we're including in these expenditures up here the capital expenditures that we are, we were doing in order to use some of that available fund balance to reinvest in the community. So these are the numbers here that we're looking at. An estimated available fund balance in our original budget was 5.1 million at the end of the fiscal year. And then our revised estimate for our worst-case scenario that actually comes out a little bit better. And that's primarily because in the public works area where all the capital projects are, we deferred some of those. We also found other revenue sources to fund many of those capital projects. So our spending in the general fund is going to be less than we had originally anticipated. So that concludes my comments on this one-page report. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you very much, Ms. Wood. Vice Mayor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. Would it, Emily, would it be possible to add a line about COVID costs that we're accruing that we may be able to recover? I've been looking at the chart and I didn't know if it was an X or Y axis. I leave it to you. But it would be nice to know just how much we have lost due to COVID and what we might recover.
We could certainly make a note of that and bring that information to you at the next meeting.
I think it will help the public understand also where we are.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Seeing no other hands, we'll continue this on to next month.
Mr. Mayor.
So we have one, oh, Councilman Lee.
All right. Can you explain what our operation cost for the city council is?
That includes things such as the stipend that the city council receives. It also includes the cost of running the meeting and the cost of producing agenda packets and all the costs that are directly related to the city council conducting its business. The majority of the cost in there is going to be through supplies and services, which is through the cost of televising the meeting and taking minutes for the meeting and that sort of cost.
Does it also include benefits?
Yes, it does, if the benefits are applicable. When we get to the budget.
Is that also? Sorry, go, go ahead.
Emily, go ahead.
I don't have any other comment on that line.
Okay, well, thank you, Emily, for the explanation. I'm just looking, maybe we could contribute somehow in, in cutting our benefits somehow. I'm not, I'm not taking benefits, so.
Well, Ms. Wood, I think some of that cost is also cost allocation for, from other departments. Is that correct?
Could you repeat that, please?
Is that also a, a cost allocation of other departments to support the city council?
Yes, some of that, that, my, um, cost allocation takes the general administrative cost of running the city. That's the council, the attorney, the manager, the clerk, human resources, and finance. And it looks at those costs and determines how much of those expenditures are really supporting other funds, such as the water and sewer fund and so forth. And the cost allocation then requires those other funds to contribute their fair share to the cost of running the administrative services of the city. You look up here at the top where you see that command is this interdepartmental line up here in the, in the revenue line. That's the, the charge to other funds to reimburse the cost of managing the city or administering the city. And that's based upon a cost allocation study that was done last year to determine how much other funds should be contributing towards administrative costs.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that presentation, and we'll afford the next one next month. All right. Let's move on to item number 11. This is the operating and capital budget proposed for fiscal year 2021, and also revisions for cost containment and direction staff.
Okay, so I'm going to share this PowerPoint with you. There's, there's a couple of different things that we're going to do as we discuss the proposed budget for next fiscal year. The first was I'm going to talk about how the budget is developed, and then we're going to talk about the general fund, which is the major operating fund of the city where your discretionary monies are. And we'll probably talk about that in more detail than we'll talk about anything else. I will also have some information on other operating funds and special revenue funds, the utility funds. But I, because there's a lot of numbers in this presentation, I'm not going to read every number to present the slide and talk generally about what it is telling us. So the, we have significant budget challenges for fiscal 2021. We're all aware of the shelter in place. We're all aware of how TOT and sales tax have dramatically declined. What I want to highlight here is the assumptions that staff made regarding revenue for fiscal year 2021. In sales tax, the first quarter of the year, we're projecting it at 25% of the prior fiscal year. Quarters two through four, we're projecting at 75% of the prior fiscal year. And TOT, in the first quarter, we're estimating 10% of the prior fiscal year. And quarters two through four, we're estimating 65% of the prior fiscal year. Now, of course, these numbers.
Ms. Mayor, Emily, your PowerPoint is not up on the screen, actually.
It's not. Oh, dear. Hang on. I'm not sure why. Because on my screen it is, and I can't get away from what I'm at.
It is online. It is online, and we all have access to it.
When I go, when I go over to Zoom, I'm not seeing the share screen. Did somebody say they're seeing it?
No, I said that if, if it's not up on MCTV, the public will not be able to see and follow.
Right.
So it's not just that we have it pulled up on our computers. It's a staff report.
I see. I don't know what to tell you. I seem to have some sort of glitch here where I cannot find or locate share screen.
It'll either be on the bottom or the top.
Well, whenever I go over to Zoom, what I'm getting is my PowerPoint. I'm not getting anything else.
Can anyone else from the city, does anyone else from the city have access to this PowerPoint and can share it?
Hey, Emily, this is Key. Would, would you like to send that email that to me? Maybe let me see if I can share it on my screen while you walk through the PowerPoint.
I have it as well. Let me.
You have it?
Now let me bring it up here. Okay, Emily, just let me know.
Okay, let's go ahead and go to, let's go ahead and, let's go to slide three.
If you can also please make that a full screen.
So I just finished telling you what the assumptions were for our, for our projections for sales tax and TOT. Can you go back one slide, Tom? Right there. We, we have started some cost containment measures. Back in February, the city manager had implemented a spending freeze. And then immediately following the shelter in place, the city manager implemented a no new hires, a hiring freeze. The allocation in fiscal year projected budget for 2021, the allocation of general fund revenue to capital improvement programs has been frozen with the exception of the Spur Trail project. And transfers to garbage garage and vehicle fund replacement are deferred. Both of those funds have sufficient fund balance to cover any costs that they may incur. Next slide, please. So let's talk about a one-year budget versus a two-year budget. The city customarily had been doing a two-year budget. However, due to the uncertainty of what's going to happen with COVID-19, staff is proposing a one-year budget rather than a two-year. You certainly, once things have settled down a little bit and the future is known better, you could certainly adopt a budget, go back to a two-year budget scenario. There are impacts to other general funds that we don't know what they're going to be at this point in time. Some of the potential impacts are listed there, such as special revenue funds seeing a reduction in revenues and utility funds possibly being impacted to the economy worsen. You know, that's very much a worst-case scenario. And we will be reviewing general fund activity monthly. Next slide, please. So we're going to cover general fund, recreation, special revenue enterprise, and internal service fund. Next slide, please. So the budget process basically is that the departments review their current year activity and propose the budget for the upcoming year. The city manager and the finance director meet with the departments to discuss their proposals. The finance department drafts a draft budget that the city manager reviews. The proposed budget is reviewed by the council budget committee, and then it is presented to the city council for approval. Tonight, we're presenting this to you for your input and direction. We'll bring it back to you on June the 9th for adoption of the budget based on and implementing any direction that you give us tonight. Next slide, please. So this is a look at the general fund. Here we've got the revenue. It's operating expense, capital expense, transfers out operating, transfers out capital. The 2019 actual, the 2020 amended budget, and the 2021 proposed budget. In the 2021 proposed budget, you see that the revenue is 29.8 million, operating expenditures are 29.1, which indicates that our, our budget is, is balanced. Revenues and expenses are approximately equal. We have transfers out operating, and on the next slide, we'll see what those are. And we have some minor transfer out capital, and our net is expected to be a negative 2.3 million. That is due, if you look up at the revenue line in 2020, our original budget was 32.1, and our, our budget for the next year is 29.8. You can see that the negative net amount there is directly due to the, the reduction in revenue. The other thing to remember, like I said before, when we were looking at the monthly report, was that the last couple of years, the city has accumulated a, a large amount of available general fund balance and has been using that for its capital, the streets and capital improvement programs. And we've arrived at a point where we've mostly expended all of that and won't be able to continue doing that. We'll have to find other revenue sources for that. Next slide, please. So here's the transfers out, in and out. The transfer in is 2.2 million. That's from the other funds for cost allocation. That's the amount due from the, as calculated through the cost allocation study. And we have transfers out to other funds, recreation fund, the police remodel fund, the field license agreement fund, the storm drain fund. Those are all for operations. There is a small transfer out to storm drain for capital. The storm drain has other capital needs, but at this point in time, we're just going to transfer out the most critical amount because the storm drain doesn't support itself. The general fund basically supports it. Next slide. So this slide is kind of hard to read, the graph here. This shows how the property tax is distributed amongst the taxing entities. If we go to the next slide, Tom, we can see the numbers a little more clearly. At, for every dollar of property tax that's collected, this is how it's broken out between the taxing entities in the area. You see there that Millbrae only gets about 16 cents on the dollar. The majority of the tax, property taxes that are paid go to other agencies. And I think that's important for the public to understand that the city does not get all of the property tax. Next slide. And this is another table that's a little difficult to read. This shows you how sales tax is, is distributed amongst the taxing entities. If we go to the next slide, we have a table. And here we see that on the 8.75% sales tax, the city of Millbrae gets 1%. The San Mateo Transportation Agency takes 1.25%. And then the other San Mateo County gets 0.5%. Down below, you see the state has several different funds that take part to the sales tax. They take 6% of sales tax goes to the state. Next slide.
So I think the important thing here, Emily, as you said, for the public, you know, we, we receive, what is that, one-eighth of, of the sales tax? So it's not the full eight-plus percentage.
Right. It's important for the, the public to realize that the city is getting a minor, a very minor share of property tax and sales tax. Next slide. So the next couple of slides, we can see just generally, sort of pictorially, where the revenues are coming in. 41.8% on property tax, 7.5 on sales tax. That's nearly 50% of our revenues come in from property tax and sales tax. Another 16% comes in from TOT tax. So seeing how those, you can see how very easily, clearly, how sales tax and TOT reductions are going to impact us. Next slide, please. General fund expenditures, so you can get a picture of where, where the expenditures are going. Salaries and benefits is 32.9%. Services and supplies is 57.8, and then there's transfers out. Services and supplies includes the contracts that we have with the fire district and with the sheriff for the police services. Next slide. And then this is by department. You can see that public safety, fire, and police take up 52.4% of the general fund expenditures. And then you could see public works is next, and community development, finance, and so forth. The non-divisional 10.7% includes the transfers out to other funds to support other funds. Next slide. And this is the general fund revenues broken out by revenue type. I'm not going to read through every line. We've seen the total on the earlier slide. Most, you could see most, most revenues are staying fairly steady, except for sales tax and TOT. Next slide. And if we look at the operating and capital by department, this is presented the same way that the monthly report was presented, where we have operating and capital summed together. See here that the expenditures have been greatly reduced, and, and that reduction is primarily due to no capital projects being done or funded in 2021 out of the general fund. Next slide. So let's talk a little bit about the general fund balance. The 6/30/19 audited available fund balance was approximately 13 million. The audited fund balance is 18 million. However, approximately 5 million of that is reserved and not available. Fiscal year 1920, we saw that before where we have the 8.1 million subtracted out. Fiscal year 2021, we have 2.3 coming out. Our projected available fund balance, fund balance at the 6/30/21 is 2.8 million. Now remember, that's available balance. That's not reserved. We still have the reserve balance of 5 million. But we can see how we've been drawing down on our available fund balance, and so we just need to keep an eye on that and be careful about what, what we're spending. Next slide. So here's the recreation fund, and it basically breaks even. The general fund transfers in money to cover operations that are not covered by recreation fees. You can see there where we've broken out recreation fees and the operating transfer in from the general fund. So you can see what the total revenues are and the total expense. And for 2021, it's a, a net, a positive net of $3,315. Next slide, please. And a streets funding comes from Major A, Major W, and highway users tax. And you'll see there here the revenues and the expenses. The projects that we are funding in capital outlay in this, in, from these funding sources include Port Delphol and Larkspur. You see that there are negative net there. Doesn't mean we're, we're, that negative net is drawing some fund balance. If we go to the next slide, please, we could see the fund balances in these funds. See where we have the audited fund balance, and in 2020 and 2021, in Major A, for example, we're using that money that had been accumulated there. And the same with the sales tax. Major W is new, so it didn't have any fund balance. Those are 6/30/19. Next slide, please. So the field license agreement is another fund that is supported by the general fund. The transfer in there comes from the general fund for operations there. Next slide, please. I'm actually going to hit these fairly quickly because there's a number of them. So if you have questions, feel free to interject. The sewer fund is balanced. Revenue is equal expenditures. And we do have some capital outlay there. And next fund, the next slide. So these are the capital projects in the sewer fund, and the hydrochloride system improvements is the one that's funded. There's a number of projects that are proposed but are not yet funded. When the, the public works department is ready to do these projects, they will come to the council and ask for appropriation from the fund balance. We saw from the previous slide that we had 4.4 million in available fund balance in the sewer fund. And so we will, because we wanted to adopt a balanced budget at this point, we will come back to council for authorization to appropriate fund balance when we get to doing those projects. Next slide, please. The sewer modernization fund is the fund that's using the bond proceeds and where we are putting the sewer overflow charge. That fund also is balanced. You see, we have more capital outlay in that fund. And it's also, you know, it's the sewer. Next slide, please. Here are the projects that the sewer fund, the sewer modernization fund is funding. You'll see there's the five projects there that are funded for fiscal 2021. There are three projects that are not funded, and those projects are pending the issuance of the next wastewater revenue bond. The council had approved revenue bonds of 44 million back in, I think it was 2018, 2017. And they currently, they only issued 22 million of those bonds, so we have an additional 22 million in bonds that we could issue for future projects. Next slide, please. And here's the water utility. It is also balanced. Revenue is equal expenditures. Next slide. Capital projects in the water utility are listed here. These are the ones that are funded. We don't have any unfunded projects at the moment in the water utility. Next slide. And here's the storm drain. And this is where we, the general fund also supports the storm drain because the assessments for storm drain are not sufficient to cover the cost. The transfer in of 877,000 is from the general fund. And then we have the one project that we're going to do in the storm drain. I believe the next slide, Tom, will show us the capital projects in storm drain. No, I didn't put them in. So there are some projects in storm drain that are not funded, but when we get to a point where we need to do those, we'll come back to council to authorize appropriations for them. Because the, the storm drain doesn't generate enough funds to cover all expenses, any future capital costs beyond the one that's budgeted there, will have to come from general fund. So then we're at our final slide. So the staff is proposing a number of cost containment provisions. We're proposing that the council adopt these in the resolution when they adopt the budget in June. But these are provisions that the council can weigh in and decide if they want to adopt them or not. No new headcount, freeze any open headcount, furlough part-time positions unless they're cost recoverable, freeze purchases of vehicles and equipment, freeze IT, hardware and software, except if it's already underway. And all of these that we're suggesting to freeze, that could be approved by the council on a one-by-one basis. If needed, we can come back to the council and say, well, we need to purchase that slide, see, and get authorization for it. Freeze all capital improvement projects from the general fund, except if it's already underway. The spur trail is already underway, and it is budgeted. And then discontinue or significantly reduce contract services. Freeze spending on upgrades or deferred maintenance on city facilities, except in an emergency. And then apply for all eligible FEMA reimbursement. I think that these cost containment provisions are important to be adopted because of the uncertainty of what the economic outcome is going to be of the impact from COVID-19. It doesn't mean that these have to continue indefinitely. I think this is a conservative approach to take to the budget at this point in time. I would recommend that council re-looks at these provisions when it re-looks at the budget in September, October. Staff should return to council with a budget update, and perhaps even amend the budget at that time, depending upon both the experience and the first three months of the fiscal year has been. And with that, I conclude my presentation, and I'm willing to take any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Boyd, for that presentation. Let's see, Council, Councilman Lee?
Yeah, thank you, Emily. That's a very good presentation. And also thanks staff, City Manager Tom Williams, for taking initiative early on in the COVID crisis to start cutting back on our costs in preparation for this day. Most cities didn't even start doing that until late March. We started it in February, late January, so thank you for that. And also notice that we have no outlay for the sewer and water. Thank you, Public Works, for, you know, balancing the cost. For the furloughs and the part-time positions, you know, at this time, I think those people really need those jobs. Anything we could do to keep those people employed, we ought to try to do that. And then terms of, of, if you could find, I think the other thing we have to do is to also be careful. A lot of times, in these, in these instances, we always do cuts in services, which is very typical. I want to make sure that the council doesn't take your eyes off the opportunities for investment for our future, too. Because if this, it's, you know, it's counterintuitive, but it's actually very, it pays off many, many, many times over when you are prepared to increase, when our economy starts picking up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Lee. So Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Emily. It looks great, and it came in really quick, so thank you for that. Going back to your sales tax slide, and this is somewhat for the public to understand. Given that so much of our purchasing has been done on internet sales, do we get? Can you please explain, and if not now, then in the future add it, of how internet sales are allocated between the state and the ZIP code where those sales may have been made on that? Because again, I think we're getting less than what our share of purchases would dictate if we were purchasing them within the city. But hopefully I'm wrong.
You know, I know that generally for most cities, that's been an issue. I am not well versed in the impact in Millbrae. Perhaps Tom can weigh in on that if he has more information than I do. Otherwise, we can come back to you with more information.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, through you, just, just real quick, there's a formula from the state of California. It has to do, not on a per capita population basis, but on a, on a trend of what, how the city performed with sales tax. So the calculation that we've done is that Millbrae is shorted somewhat as a result because our, our sales tax is lower due to not having auto, auto dealerships and some other high-generating taxable sales that the city once had. So it's something that, something to continue to obviously look at and monitor. Yes, I do think there will be amendments in the law in the future, but certainly, we need to take an active role in that.
Thank you, City Manager. I think we, we definitely should do that, and the public needs to understand that, too, because they may think, wow, internet sales, Millbrae should be making big money because we don't have retail in town, and yet it works the opposite for us. The other question, or just to make sure that the public understands, and this is if the federal bill that gives state and, and local governments money back because of COVID, that the current formula gives 70% of the monies to cities of 50,000 or greater, and 30% to cities of below 50,000. So I haven't done the math to see how that's going to work out in San Mateo County, but my gut is telling me that automatically smaller cities are going to see less per capita than a larger city will see. And maybe that will change if this bill actually gets to the president's desk and he signs it, but something to keep an eye on. My last question was, in January, we talked about the minimum wage increase. And at the time, I believe only our part-time seasonal recreation staff were below $15. Is this something that we're going to need to table until we come out of the current recession? Or is it something that we can look at in the future?
Do you want to comment on that, Tom?
Well, yeah, I would, I would say, you know, my advice right now, you know, as Emily had mentioned, I think we need to take a pause in the first quarter of this new fiscal year and see what policies are adopted at the federal government, what types of relief may trickle down into municipalities. I think, Councilwoman, you had mentioned, and I was talking to Councilmember Oliva about this earlier today. The projection is Millbrae would receive $7 million from the House adopted bill that is stalled in the Senate right now. But to answer your question about increasing the minimum wage, my recommendation would be, let's just take a pause and see where this thing goes in the, in the first quarter. Come back in October and have some of these other, you know, more detailed policy discussions as we move forward.
Okay, so I bring that up now because it would be my understanding that, given that we're bringing back the summer camp program, yay, that those are our part-time seasonal employees who would be working at that, and that they come in at $12.85, I think. And I'm just not sure, given that they have families, too, and they may be helping their families, if we should be looking at what step they come in at.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're going to look at all of that and, and, you know, the delicate balance of what's fair and maintain, you know, a balanced budget, so.
Well, and then going back to the slide that said the recommendations of cost savings right now, which included that you need the council vote to add people unless they're cost recovery. Aren't those employees' cost recovery, given that they will be paid directly out of the fees for summer camp?
Correct, they are cost recovery.
So maybe we could think about the $15, then?
Yeah, actually, I, I don't know if either Angela or Mackenzie can pop in. I don't think there's anyone that is paid less than $15 an hour over in recreation as, as part-time seasonal employees at this point in time. I could be wrong, but we looked at it a few months ago.
And I have had the community ask me about restaurant workers, and I know that our restaurants are hanging on by a thread, so I'm not encouraging us to do that. But it's going to come back to us eventually, and I just don't want it to get lost as we're dealing with everything related to the pandemic. I'm done.
Okay, Councilwoman Oliva?
Yeah, Emily, this is like super, super great. And what I would request, because I, like Tom had mentioned, I did have a conversation with regards to what it looks like Millbrae will probably, I hope, receive from, funding from the feds. We, can we take a glance at all of this? Because obviously, when anybody's in a process of looking at their finances and everything is tied, you don't look at them just on a quarterly basis, or yearly basis, or one-year budget. But I think that it would be really advantageous to all of us, and to our city, and to our, of course, constituents, that we look at maybe on next quarter to see what's going on and see what has changed. I, I don't think that we should just say, okay, this is great, and I'm so grateful that this looks as good as it does. Yet I don't want to just sweep it under the carpet. I want to make sure that we address this like it's a priority for all of us.
So one of the things that you could do is in your resolution adopting the budget in June, is you could add a provision in there that requires staff to bring the budget back to you on a quarterly basis for review and amendment, depending upon what new information is known at that time. That would prevent the, the budget from just getting away from you. It would give you more control over it and maintaining and watching what's happening with it.
Yeah, with the, with the, with, with all my council members, I would love that, if that could be an amendment to all of that.
Yeah, I think we typically do that. We typically have quarterly budget reviews and amendments.
With, okay. I, I think that we do, but if we can make sure that this is a-
Sure, we can formalize that here.
Pardon me?
We can formalize that in the, in the resolution that comes forward next month.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and Miss Ray, I'll just add to that, that we started tonight, monthly budget reports, and we're going to continue those monthly budget reports, you know, through this crisis and-
Just one other question. Tom, do we have any idea when we might hear the, the resolution that's going on in the Senate to when the city might be eligible for these funds, the 7 million?
You know, Councilmember, I don't have an update on the timing. Perhaps on our Wednesday phone call, we'll, we'll get more up-to-date information from the Congresswoman.
And maybe, maybe our city could be asking for, you know, you know, well, our Congresswoman, we need our senator, but if, because it's going to go to the Senate. So if we could, if we could please make, maybe all of us could make some phone calls and make sure that how important this is to the city of Millbrae, who is like, actually can make her, it could make a huge difference in our budget.
Yeah, I mean, my, my understanding is that, that bill is basically dead on arrival at the Senate. And frankly, it's not going to be the California senators that are going to be killing it. It's many of the senators in other states, including the Senate Majority Leader. But it's possible that some type of-
Mayor, I'm going to die trying. Yeah.
Sorry?
I want to die trying. I mean, I think that it's, it's our duty to give it a shot.
My, my, I mean, it's possible there may be some type of compromise bill that's eventually approved, but it likely would be a fraction of 7 million that we'd actually be receiving. And without any certainty on that, I think we really cannot account for it in the budget until, until we get some type of a check from, from the federal government.
Intentions of my conversation here, but I think that we owe it to everybody to give it a shot, to try. And I-
All right.
We have, we're swimming upstream, but let's give it a shot.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Pappen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My Ellen, let me see here. Yes, thank you very much. I'd be curious, thank you for the report and the monthly follow-ups as we go along here. Also, tracking whenever way we can our recovery moves. So hopefully, we will come up with an ordinance about eating outside, and hopefully, martial arts studios and the hotel regulations will all open up a bit in a safe manner to keep everybody safe. But hopefully, we can track some of those movements as we progressively come back to some sort of recovery.
All right, thank you. And I think it's also important that, you know, while we're in a current budget crisis now, that we don't stop looking forward to, you know, even if it's not going to help in the, in the upcoming fiscal year 2021 budget. There's, there are things that we can do for economic development that will pay dividends down the road, like for example, a data center proposal on that courtyard site. I believe the RFP was going to be reissued at some point, and I haven't heard anything about that in several months. We also potentially could have a new hotel coming onboard at the Westin Aloft site. So, you know, I hope City Manager Williams and staff are continuing to move forward on those proposals and other economic development for Millbrae, so that as we come out of this recession at some point, we'll be coming out in a stronger place than we were going in, going into it.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's, I mean, I, just on that note, there's still plenty of demand. Real quick, on the, on the hotel between the Westin and the Aloft, that is moving forward actively through the, through the land development process and EIR. And so, yeah, Ms. Mayor, I think that is an excellent point, and we will continue.
Okay. All right. Vice Mayor Schneider, one final comment, and then we'll move on.
This is just to go back to what Councilwoman Oliva said. Today, Speaker of the House Pelosi was on Chris Hayes, I believe, and said that she and Senator McConnell have been talking. So I don't know if it's dead on arrival, and that the Senate will not take this up until June, but that's only a few days from now. So maybe we'll know more in a week or two, maybe.
All right, thank you very much. So this, it says action on the agenda, but it's not, we're not really taking any formal action on this. The budget will be coming back in June, so I think we can move on to the next item on the agenda.
Just, if there's an agreement on our cost containment provisions here, and, you know, whether it's a formal vote or just concurrence, you know, continue to move in this direction. And as has been mentioned, I will keep the city council informed. You know, as, as I know it, you will know it, because this is a dynamic process for sure, and things are forever changing, and the next three months, six months will certainly look different than it does today.
Yeah, I think we have concurrent consensus to move forward. The only other question, did we receive any public comments on this?
No, no public comments.
Okay, and please alert me if I, if, or is a public comment on one of these items, and I neglect to ask. Okay, so let's move on to item number 12. This is the letter response to California High-Speed Rail 2020 Business Plan. Now, I think everybody should have received, well, we had, we had a lengthy discussion about this at our last council meeting, and I hope that pretty much all of the issues that were risen at that meeting have been addressed now in the updated letter. I don't know, Tom, if you want to give just a kind of a brief background, if that's needed?
Yes, Miss Ray, I'm, I had some slides up here, but for some reason, I've got a little technical difficulty myself. So I apologize. I, I think if everyone has, has the letter, it's been modified, a lot of hard work by, by the mayor and Councilmember Pappen. And I think that it, it provides a little bit more information on what Millbrae is looking for in the business plan, and, you know, what our needs are as we have the vision to build out the west side of the station since 1998, when the Millbrae stationary specific plan was adopted.
And I'd also like to thank-
I had to get a little bit, unfortunately, something happened to my screen, so I apologize.
I'd also like to thank Assistant City Attorney Michael Conneran for his help with the drafting letter as well, and to organize our thoughts a little bit better. But this went through several rounds of revisions, and I hope it has, meets everybody's expectations at this point. Let's see, Councilman Pappen, is this, is your hands up?
Yeah, could we just, just- No, this is, again, a new one, sorry. Could you just read the first paragraph? Could you just read the first paragraph so we get the education of the audience in realm in line here, because this one's much more focused. So you, I mean, I can read it. It's just the first paragraph here. "The City of Milbrae has reviewed the California High-Speed Rail Authority 2020 draft business plan and provides below specific comments and serious objections on the provisions of the plan that pertain to Milbrae. Given the exceptionally detrimental impacts the high-speed rail project will have upon the city, it is, if it's constructed as presently contemplated, the city must speak out on a number of major issues. California High-Speed Rail Authority's singular proposal to construct an unnecessary surface-level parking lot would critically devastate the economic viability of Milbrae and destroy both existing and approved housing desperately needed in this region." That's just the first paragraph. But I think we get to the point, and thank you to the mayor and everybody who worked on it.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman Papin, let's see, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I want to say that I think the letter is fantastic. I think you all did a tremendous job. It reads really well, it's strong, and it's polite at the same time, so well done. I do have two tiny comments. I did run them past the city manager earlier today. On page three of the letter, at the paragraph that starts with page 81, it says several homes would be affected. But actually, when Tom and I talked, it's actually 23 homes or up to 23 homes. So I would encourage or would like to see that several homes be replaced with up to 23 homes on that section. And then I think that I'm the one that brought up that the bullet train, the difference between a high-speed rail train, time between San Francisco and Diradon Station is four minutes different than the bullet train. I did hear that from a Brisbane representative to the stakeholder meeting. So before we use that in a letter, it would be really great if we can cite it to an official document. Just a caution, I'm, I'm comfortable, I also heard it at an A-Bag meeting, but just want us to be perfect on this letter.
I think in terms of the 23 homes, I mean, we could put that in there. However, the maps that were presented in the previous meeting showing the, the impacts to, to the properties is not official from High-Speed Rail. This is our interpretation of what they have proposed. So I mean, I guess we can go with the consensus of the council on this, but I, I don't know if we, 23 is an exact number.
I would agree to add the 23. Let them defend it at this point in time. They're the ones who've been hiding the ball.
Up to, up to 23?
Exactly, yeah. That's why we use the word up to. It gives the city wiggle room.
Okay.
But it's, it uses a number, and the number is bigger than the houses they're taking away at Diradon, significantly bigger.
Okay, and Mr. Williams, do you have any source for the four-minute difference?
That would be Councilmember Schneider. No, I'm just kidding. I, I've actually heard that. I have not, I have not seen any studies, but I've heard that from several sources. I would say, again, kind of like the housing, let them come back to us and-
Okay, and it was the mayor of Brisbane that gave me that number two, now that I remember. So I've heard it from a couple of, of people who are very involved in high-speed rail.
Okay. All right, Councilman Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take out, I kind of feel that some phrases are a little bit emotional. In page three, paragraph two, at the end, where it says, "Bar or Cal train parking is not, is not only disingenuous but completely unacceptable." Well, it should be matter, should be more matter-of-fact that this is in direct, in direct conflict with, with regional planning for housing, or something like that. And then on page three, last paragraph, take out unacceptable form of collateral damage and say, I mean, something different than saying, that's, that's emotional, if you ask me. And it's, it's our opinion, and just, it should be matter-of-fact, it should say, this is not a, a good way. This is not, this is, this would cause collateral damage, which would impact many financially vulnerable people. Take out outrageous in page four, third paragraph, moreover, this is an outrageous position. Try to make this as matter-of-fact as possible. And then on conclusion, maybe we, I want to, I think, I suggest we start off with, there are pragmatic, straightforward solutions that could avoid conflicts and blah, blah, blah. And then say on numerous occasion, when you start, when you start attacking their staff, then their staff might dig their heels in and not hear, you know, what we have to say or being, or not even be open to what we have to say.
Well, interestingly enough, just in the last couple of days, we've finally received offers to meet with the CEO. And I think it's probably, you know, in response to this letter that, you know, that they knew that we were putting together.
Okay.
That one, I think it's okay to leave in.
Let's not paint them into a corner.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, please?
Okay, yes, Councilman Papin?
Yeah, Councilmember Lee, they've had their opportunity, and we have struggled throughout. I do think the emotion needs to stay in the letter as it exists currently. They have ignored every request we've made, and actually, the mayor and I shared the points of this letter with our representative, Kevin Mullen, so that he would have some aspects of this. I think we should seriously leave it, except for what the vice mayor mentioned there. And they need to basically resolve, we've given them every opportunity. It's, this is our representation, and I think we should stick with it.
Well, that's the point. They don't have any, they don't have to, they can just grow.
No, they, they, the whole point of this letter, Councilmember Lee, is that they do have to, and they have not been, and that's what we are emphasizing here. We do not need to accommodate them. We have, we've offered alternatives we don't have to offer. So I think the power of this letter needs to stay as is.
I think it's powerful enough without the emotions, Councilwoman, I think that-
During the drafting process, believe me, I helped remove several more emotional words. If Councilwoman Papin had her way, it would be a very different-looking letter, I would-
I appreciate your deal, Councilwoman Papin. But we, you know, we want to make sure, if, if the board, if there are people willing to meet with us, then we shouldn't try to paint them in the corner. We shouldn't, we shouldn't like stub their toe when it comes-
Councilmember Lee, we have met with them multiple times, and that's the reason we have to write this letter, is that they have not taken us seriously or acknowledged anything we've represented. That's why we're at this point.
The point is, they have no, they have no, they can walk, they can run over us all they want, that's the point.
Mayor?
Really little leverage.
They can't.
I, I don't agree. I don't think we have much leverage, and I was trying to create that leverage.
I don't know, maybe can our legal counsel weigh in on the leverage here and what are-
Our legal counsel has a conflict.
Just remind the council that we have an approved project. The approved project is on the left, and High-Speed Rail Surface Parking Lot is on the right. So correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, but I mean, an approved project on a piece of private property under the laws of California means something, especially 444 residential units.
Sorry, Ms. Casman, are you?
I might be on mute. I can see her trying to talk.
I was on mute, mute. My kids keep saying it's mute, not moot.
It's our convenient background.
So what, you know, you're arguing style. You know, what you are arguing is, is style, and I don't think that that is really a legal issue. The, the issue is you have a very important point to, points to make, and what is the best way to be heard? And I'm, I'm hearing two different positions on how best to get your point across. And I understand them both. It really is a matter of style.
I understand that, but my-
Sometimes emotion can, can, you know, reach a point where it does turn off and it becomes unprofessional, but that you've got to decide what's appropriate.
Well, my, my question is not that. My question is, can High-Speed Rail do what they like, want to do with the project? Or can we, do we have leverage? Do we have some say or some leverage in order to make, make, compel them to, to, to look at our project and agree that our project would benefit them?
Well, I certainly agree that you have an approved project. This is the, the state of California. Can they? Well, they certainly have a little more power than we have. It should cost them a lot of money if they were to do that, and they shouldn't do it. I mean, they certainly have the power of eminent domain if it were to come to that. I, I think we have to work as you are to try to reach a political result that meets both of our interests. That's what I think.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Schneider?
To comment, to Councilman Lee, I also passed this version by a number of people who live or who have experience in this area. And the difference between this and the first draft, the emotion that's in the current version, I think is applicable, they thought was applicable, it was professional, and it didn't make us sound like victims. It made us sound like we are speaking from strength. And clearly, it's already happened, because finally, High-Speed Rail has come around and said that. So this is not the time to back down on that. And in terms of my experience with EIRs, what we are hoping is to get some real changes in the business plan that gives us more power to see those changes in the EIR. We're going to be fighting the same battle when the EIR is released in a couple of weeks. So it's important that we stay strong now, and staff has to have a thicker skin, just like we as elected officials have to have a thicker skin. So I, I think the letter is really terrific, and we should approve it and sign it and get it out there. And I would love to be sending it to a number of, of partners and people we need to educate.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Schneider, but that's not my intent to make it weaker. I agree with the letter. I agree with the purpose of the letter. I don't, I just want to make sure that we go out the strongest way, and I don't want to look like we're in a weak position in way, when you put emotions into a letter, it makes us look weak. That's my, just my-
Go ahead. Okay, I have one minor recommended change on that same page three. The last line, I don't think, has to be in bold. It doesn't really fit with the rest of the formatting of the letter.
I agree.
Page three, you mean page 133, phase one, environmental completion, that?
No, page three of the letter, comments on 2020 Business Plan, the final paragraph, page 81.
Just a formatting error, I think.
I think it's a formatting error, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was never bolded before, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think in our drafts, it was not, it was not bolded, so I think, unbold that.
So can I, do we move approval with the one modification of up to 23? And the lack of, remove the folding?
If you're the author, so I'd be happy to move approval.
Do we have any public comments on this?
Yes, yes, we do. We do have two, two public comment items, so let me go ahead and start those. The first item is from Stephen Green. "California High-Speed Rail taking over the third BART track has never been considered. Additionally, the city should stop pretending that tunneling through Milbrae has been an option at any time since 2012. It was abandoned in 2012 when the authorities took option to fight against delays and cost overruns. It was only ever considered as an alternative in the 2010 Preliminary Alternatives Analysis Report. The only reason tunneling is being done in San Francisco is to connect the newly-built Transbay Terminal. Continuing to pretend that tunneling in Milbrae has been considered in the last decade makes it seem like the city is the one that hasn't been paying attention and ignoring high-speed rail, not the other way around. It weakens your other arguments. Similarly, the proposed parking lot appears to be only a penciled-in design at most. High-Speed Rail, by the absence of any mention of this parking lot in any of their published materials, seems particularly ambivalent towards it and not desperate to get it built like the city contends. Their primary concern seems to be with platform expansions into what would be the extension of California Drive, but maybe the city has heard otherwise." Stephen Green. The second item of public comment is from Marge Colapietro. "Honorable mayor and council members, thank you to the council subcommittee members, Mayor Holliver and Councilmember Papin for your work on revising the city council's letter to the California High-Speed Rail. I'm quite beneficial, because of the pages of the letter were not numbered. I call your attention to the fourth page, go to the second paragraph, the last complete sentence. However, after all of this effort, the city was told last week by High-Speed Rail's current regional director and his staff that they do not have the authority to endorse or accept any of our plans. Shame on them. How much more time were they going to keep that secret from us? What were they thinking? I assume part of the reason Governor Newsom appointed Mr. Tom Richards to High-Speed Rail Board of Directors, he is the current vice chairman, was because he works with local government leaders to address homelessness issues. He chaired a planning council that prepared a 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness and sits on the Fresno Mayor's First Steps Home Initiative. I wonder what the state legislators and government Newsom will think of High-Speed Rail's complete disregard for their housing objectives, and that will devastate our city's economic viability and long-term sustainability. I hope our federal, state, county, I hope our federal, state, county legislators will expeditiously support our beloved community and stand with us. Respectfully, Marge Colapietro, Mayor Emeritus, City of Milbrae." And that concludes public comment, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Lewis. Okay, oh, Councilman Aliva, did you have a comment?
I did, actually, before public comment. I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
I'm going to be, I'm going to, I'm going to join the team here and support the letter, and I think that everybody's on the same page here, just trying to make it perfect. I had recommended that it had a stronger ending, and I don't see that. But I'll go forward with all your hard work, and I'll support this letter. Yet, from what I hear, that they've already asked to meet with you after they saw this letter. Fantastic, yet, when? How many, how many times are you guys going to just like, to me, this is just, we're, which I think is smart. We're documenting, and we're, we're gearing up for a fight, which I, I realize we have, but we're just documenting. We're not act, this, to me, doesn't bring resolution, because there's no end date to it. They've asked, from what I hear, Mayor, that from this letter or from whatever you're talking about, that they want to meet. But when? And so that's what I would just actually ask, just like, put a date.
Yep.
And we look, and from your past conversation, we'd like to meet next week.
Well, City Manager Williams, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had been requesting a meeting with, either with the CEO or with the Chair of the Board for, I think, over a year, and we've been unable to get past one, you know, staff member managing the Northern California section. And I think because of this letter, they, they finally reached out. I don't know when, when the first message you received from them, but I, I got an email, I think, around 3:00 PM today, acknowledging that they were, were trying to set up a meeting with the CEO.
That's fantastic. Set a date, please.
Oh, let's, yeah.
Mayor, that's correct.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Schneider?
I reread the last paragraph of the letter, and to me, this is saying, High-Speed Rail, please consider several, or at least- or at least one other alternative in the environmental impact report." And, and in the business plan that we are considering additional plans or project alternatives. So to me, that's standard kind of environmental language in there, saying that, first of all, I can't believe they can get away with only one project. You always have to have alternatives, period. And to not have alter, alternatives opens you up to legal action. So to me, the last paragraph is kind of part and parcel with the IR language.
Okay, are, are you recommending changes to it then?
I think it's fine.
I think we need to wrap this up.
I think the reference, I mean, it would be, to me, that's a strong conclusion. Maybe you add the paragraph between the two in the conclusion about having a meeting. But yeah, we have another meeting and they do the same thing that they've done with all the other meetings, is completely ignore and say no. So yay, hey, they reached out to say they'll have a meeting. If you're gonna say no, who cares?
Well, I think, you know, part of the issue is, um, I, I think we're, we're trying to alert them to these issues before the EIR is completed. You know, I don't know, uh, city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, but there could be a potential takings issue, a potential litigation, if they show these parking lots over private property. Ms. Kasten?
Yes.
And I, I think, you know, these are things that they need to address and, and, you know, before the EIR. You know, currently what they are proposing is really unacceptable for all parties involved.
Well, yeah, at this point, it's at the plan stage. And so, you know, um, they're, they're proposing a plan that would have very dire effects in our city. And you're speaking up and telling them they can't do it. Um, and I'm hoping that we can get this resolved.
Yeah, Mr. Ray, I'll go on the record here to state that we've received communication from Class A office builders and from Class A residential builders that have been working with the underlying property owner. And once they see this plan from High-Speed Rail, they come back and say that they cannot get, they cannot get financing as a result.
Okay, all right. So do we have a, a motion to approve?
I'm moved to approve with the amendment of the up to twenty-three and removing the bold.
I'll second that.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Papen?
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
The draft letter is unanimously approved with the edits of adding in the language of up to twenty-three housing and removing the bold from that, the letter.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And this needs to be submitted in the next few days. So maybe if staff can make those minor adjustments, um, maybe early in the day tomorrow and have the final draft printed out. And if everyone can please come by City Hall to sign, hopefully by, I don't know, close the business tomorrow or by tomorrow evening, then we can get this sent out in time. Uh, and I think it's stronger with, with, you know, all five of our signatures on it. All right, let's move on to item number thirteen. This is a, on the Milbury Recreation Center Restoration Project.
Ms. Mayor, I will hand it over to our acting Public Works Director, Ms. Jane Cal for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council, Jane Cal Public Works Department, here to give an update on the Milbury Recreation Center project. Uh, so a quick recap of what was, uh, provided at the last meeting, our last month's meeting. So we have three pre-qualified design build entities or teams. Uh, we issue a request for proposal on April twenty-second to the three teams. And the contract stipulated sum is twenty-four point three million. And that includes construction and design of the, of the building. What's not included is the moving expenses, furniture, fixtures and equipment, as well as other soft costs that's incurred by the city. Uh, included in the RFP is our design criteria documents. And, um, this is actually specifications, specifications of what Group Four design and was approved by city councils. So this is like about thousand pages worth of specifications related to the design of the center, rec center. As mentioned in the last meeting, uh, we provide the design build team some flexibility on certain elements to meet the project budget. So the design, so the design, uh, the city staff, city team met to try to reduce the cost of construction cost by about three million dollars to meet the thirty million dollar budget for, um, the project. And I'll, I'll elaborate on that in just a moment. We call those opportunities for renovation, innovations. Uh, proposals are due on June twelfth, twenty twenty, so that's coming up. So opportunities for innovations. So there's six areas of opportunities. And each bullet point on these slides is an element where the teams may depart from the requirements of the design criteria documents. So we opened up these elements in order to encourage the teams to propose solutions that would enhance the value of the project while helping us reduce the costs. So I'll briefly go through those, uh, these five areas. So number one is structural system. This is pretty straightforward. We're looking for an innovative approach to the structural system that would enhance the design statement that the project makes to community. But while building upon the architectural aesthetic shown in the rendering stuff we've shown, the Group Four design, particularly the roof of the, the slope roof element at the lobby lounge and the community room. So the lantern design is what we're trying to maintain while, uh, providing flexibility on the structural design. Excuse me. Uh, the second area is building program and planning. Here we are giving the teams flexibility on locations of certain classrooms, uh, storage space, narrowing the hallway with, by a foot. I think we talked about this last time. It'll be about eight feet after narrowing down. Design of game room fitness storage, having two instead of three movable partitions in the community room. And also redesign of the staff suite, which they can, um, reduce up to five percent of the space, square footage. So area number three is site design. So what's not fixed and that the design team can deviate from the Group Four design is, how much concrete flat work there is that can be reduced by twenty-five percent. The concrete color, whether we want stained concrete or not, that's up to the co, uh, design build team to, to determine, uh, how they design that and help reduce the cost by using, uh, non-tinted concrete color. Ramp from the preschool play yard can be deleted. So there's certain elements we're allowing the design build teams to, to remove from the contract. That includes the ramp, uh, also concrete seat wall, twig, uh, twig branches, benches, large specimen tree. And also, uh, we're allowing the design build team to keep twenty-five percent of the trees that were going to be removed. The fourth area is mechanical, electrical and plumbing. So here we are opening up the restroom layouts, the card reader locations, the security camera location and the HVAC equipment specification. I think the main point here is really allowing the, the design build teams to maximize stacking of the restrooms and back-to-back restroom in order to maximize efficiency of the plumbing. Uh, number five is interior finishes. So there's a couple of things here and walk-off metal grills. Those are the ones where, uh, it's placed, it's a grill placed in front of the door, front doors, where, um, people can step on and get dirt off. Instead of, um, having something like that, we, we allow the design build team to, to offer other solutions. Uh, some other things that are also open to, um, their creativity is how the lounge and lobby guardrail railing design will be done. Uh, the ceiling height can be lowered by up to a foot. Um, the ceiling design can be open loft designed and that's, um, some of the rooms are already open loft. There are certain rooms that are not, and we're opening that up for the design build teams. Uh, lastly, um, it's the exterior design and finishes. So with the reduction of ceiling height, the, the building floor-to-floor height can reduce by as much as two feet. Uh, the second floor roof design, um, can, can change to allow for more solar friendly. So it could be flat roof. Square footage of trellises can be reduced by thirty-three percent. Uh, the wood pattern metal soffits at the roof overhangs can be redesigned as well as the slope metal roofing specification. So here we would emphasize on life cycle clo, uh, cost and durability over color appearance since it's high up and less visible. Um, sorry. And then the second floor deck design can change as well as the railing design. And in terms of stucco, uh, we are emphasizing on waterproofing protection first over aesthetic of its finishes. So over the last three weeks, we've had, um, confidential meetings with each of the three teams, about five hours each total over the last three weeks. These meetings are confidential. I would love to tell you and show you all the renderings, but this is a competitive process, so we cannot do this in a public forum. Uh, the, these meetings, uh, are, drivers of these meetings are the design build teams. They come up with proposed plans to show us as well as, um, have, when they have questions, it's a good time to ask us. And our, and the city's team, which comprises of, um, Swinerton, our, our PM for the project, as well as city staff and the subcommittee, we would provide inputs to, to the, to each team and their proposed, proposed layout. And we focus on maintaining the program space and guiding them, um, ensuring that the Group Four original design, um, overall aesthetic is still there. And there is a concern that's been expressed by, um, the, the teams, which is timeline and, and that in regards to permitting process, we are extending the project by, the construction timeline by two months, which you will see here, uh, from December to February at, for end of construction and moving the move-in date from March to May. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Papen?
No questions, I'm sorry, lower hand.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, Councilman Lee?
Yeah, um, Jane, thank you. You guys are doing a great job. Um, and thank you to the, uh, the committee, Gina, Papen and Mayor Oliver for directing this. Um, my question, what is a walk-off or walk-off metal grills?
It is a grill that's placed usually in the interior of a building, right at the front door. So when people walk on it, uh, the dirt will fall on it, so it doesn't get tracked throughout the building.
So you're talking about allowing them to remove them or putting them in?
We are allowing them the, uh, removing of those walk-off grill and perhaps putting in traditional, uh, carpeting mat.
Well, I kind of think that that might be a good safety, um, issue to prevent people, you know. Better, I mean, yeah, I guess carpet would better, but, uh, in the long run, I would think that would be a wise investment, but okay. Thank you. I really appreciate, uh, the work you've done in the years there.
Okay, Vice Mayor Schneider?
I thank you and thank you for the staff report. But, um, you had some really incredible information in the slides. Most of it, I think, scanning through it, I, I understand and I'm comfortable with. However, sorry, as allergies, the section on exterior treatments, that makes me a little bit concerned. So I have a request. Could you please send us your slides so that people like me who've only just seen this can actually look at it a little bit? My concern is they're stucco and they're stucco. And they're stucco that matches the neighborhood nearby, not meaning that the apartments that are nearing end of life versus the residential homes that are nearing their one-hundred-year historical status. So I'm a little bit concerned about, um, stucco. It's just not that simple. So if you could send that to me, that would be great. Ms. Cal, you just said that you're, the move is to go to traditional carpet. By that, do you mean carpet squares or carpet? Because I think there's a good savings in carpet squares versus laying out all carpet. So I'm just throwing that out there and making sure that the green, um, features can be met on something as simple as carpet squares, which I believe we installed at the Chet Cootie Room in City Hall just for that purpose. You only have to replace the damaged sections on that. Um, the stairway railing, we had a long discussion about that because we're asking seniors to come down from the second floor to the first floor in an emergency. I know you guys will do it the right way, but when I saw the railings are being opened up, I just want to make sure that we're remembering that we may have ninety-year-olds plus coming down those stairs because the elevator will be closed in the event of a fire or an earthquake and that we need a system that will get seniors down there. It was the number one concern about putting seniors up on the second floor. And, um, you mentioned flat roof. That scares me too, um, unless it's gonna have a garden or a balcony on it. But I'll look at, at your, uh, presentation on that. And finally, we did on Martin Luther King Day, remove a number of plants from the old site, given that we're getting really close, I hope soon, to breaking ground. There's still some plants there that, um, members of, of the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee and I are planning, if we can get them, we are planning on using them as a plant sale to raise money for the rec center. So in your timeline, I have no problems with a two-month extension. But is there a chance for some of us with social distancing to get in there and grab some more of the plants around the existing foundation? So just throwing that out there. I think there's time to do it over the next two to three months, but there are some plants we can sell.
Thank you.
And, oh, one last thing. I noticed in our budget, there's a line item of a hundred and, is it one hundred? Is it one million, one hundred thousand for solar roof? But there is nothing in there about a cistern. And I am telling you, with resiliency planning, cisterns are the way to handle and capture stormwater so we can reuse it. And it is a lost opportunity. And if it's not in our budget or somewhere in these plans, not that these contractors have to, well, they would have to do it, but if we don't have it written down somewhere, we cannot apply for grant funding for it. If there are infrastructure grants coming forward, we need to be able to point to that, that it at least is something and could be very shovel-ready. Because clearly it has to happen earlier in the project than at the end of the project because it's when you're moving land around or soil around. So I just, I'm really gonna be harping on a cistern at the east end, not in the building, not in the patio, but below it. And maybe it can be done after the fact, but just keep that there. It's climate change now, people.
All right, thank you for those comments. My only additional comment is on the, the two-month extension that, little bit concerned about that because if we're talking about Mar, uh, May, end of May, you're getting very close to the beginning of summer camp. And if, you know, staff has not fully moved in and all the FNE is not, um, has not been purchased yet, procured for the building by May, will summer camp be able to take place that year? So it's, you know, another year of loss of having to use the interim, uh, rec center for summer camp.
Thank you, Mayor. We will, uh, look into that and ensure and, and make sure that we can hopefully get the summer camps ready, uh, in time.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think just from the feedback from the subcommittee during- Yeah, I mean, I think just from the feedback from the subcommittee during the meetings that were held. I I think the feedback is more, you know, May as sort of like a drop dead day as opposed to like a target date. So I mean, if if they could stick to the previous schedule with the soft move in by, I think it was March of twenty twenty-two. I think that would be preferable. Of course, you know, we're trying to stay within budget here, so we have to be a little bit flexible. But I think that would be preferable than to to moving to May. One other question. Haven't heard much recently about the city surplus properties that need to be sold to to meet the cash flow for this project. Is there any update on that?
Is key limb on the available for comment?
Yes, I am. We actually have the request for proposal to get a broker on on board, so we will are gonna go ahead and release the R I P actually this week.
Oh, perfect. All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, also, can you want to briefly mention to the council about the other surplus property you've identified or or Ms. Mayor, we put that on another agenda item and bring it.
Okay, yeah, I'll do that at the subsequent meeting. We have another piece of potential surplus property that we could bring to the council for consideration for sales.
Okay, good. Glad to hear that. All right. So let's move on. Okay, Vice Mayor Schneider, very, very quickly.
The specimen tree. I understand that they may not be able, we won't have the money to put it in, but are we taking away the place where it would go? Because if it's just a matter of purchasing a tree, we can always go and add that tree later, can't we? Okay, I see you shaking your head, Mr. Baker. Thank you so much.
The the location is not being removed.
Very good.
Okay. All right, let's move on now to item number fourteen. This is recommendations for artworks submitted by Millbury Seniors for utility box painting. Do we have a presentation?
This is Mr. Mayor, our Recreation Director, Mackenzie Brady, will be providing the staff report.
Folks, are you able to see this? All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, Mackenzie Brady, Recreation Director. And I am briefing you on the artwork that was chosen by the Cultural Arts Committee for the the painting done on the the utility box for the seniors. And as you may remember, Mills and Cappuccino's designs were chosen and the individuals did start making those paintings. But then the pandemic happened and there was a shelter in place, so that they were not able to finish the painting. So hopefully those will continue shortly. And the senior design will hopefully be painted as weather allows, but as we're able to get back into the swing of things after the shelter in place. You have any questions regarding this?
Excuse me.
Looks quite nice. I'm gonna go very well there.
Yes, they they put the painting together based on essentially the shape of the box. So this is how how it would look.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, and next step would just be for the the council to approve this design.
Mayor, just a comment from the the M C A C.
Sure.
The actual box turns out to be a little bit taller, so they have told me that there will be a little bit more blue sky. But they wanted you to know that. They wanted council to know that. So it may not look exactly like this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's good information.
Motion to approve, please.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember.
And a second from.
Councilmember Pappen.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Oliver.
Aye.
The motion to approve the recommended artwork submitted by Millbury Seniors for the utility box painting is unanimously approved.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on now to council comments, and I believe Councilman Lee, you'd wanted to show a video from M C T V regarding the census.
Uh, yeah.
It's getting a getting a bit late, but if that's a short video, we can.
Yeah, it's up since two minutes. It's up to you. Do you want to run it or you don't?
Yeah, let's run it. Yeah.
Okay, let me find it. Can you see anything?
No.
I don't see anything on mine either. I did send a I did send the link to Tom. Tom, can you play it?
Tom. He hasn't left the building. I know he's here.
Where's the sound?
Pretty much sound.
But it looks good.
All right, well.
Angela. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for indulging. Would you like me to go ahead and make council comments?
Sure, yeah, and if and, you know, first of all, couldn't really hear that, but I I guess we can, anybody in the public can look it up on YouTube, look up M C T V Census twenty twenty and that should come up. Yeah, I'm sure. Councilman Lee, if you'd like to give brief comments, please.
Yeah, it's gonna be very brief. On the meeting of the A Bag Executive Board, they talked about the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, which would be chaired by the M T C, which is kind of kind of intuitive since A Bag is the Associate Bayer Government is supposed to be the agency that deals with housing. But because M T C has the ability to put measures, revenue measures on the ballot, then they're chairing the committee. And so, but it's a very we I had a problem with the bureaucracy because M T C would have to approve it, A Bag has to approve it, and then it goes back and it goes to A Bag, M T C, and it comes back to A Bag for final approval. And that's just, I think that's just a very inefficient way of doing things. And there's also a discussion about the fact that A Bag is supposed to be the agency to to plan policy for housing, and yet M T C is, which is supposed to be the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which Councilwoman Pappen is part of, is on the board. They are, you know, primarily supposed to be focusing on on transportation. So it's it's just, to me, it's just a huge inefficiency and use of money. And so M T C and A Bag, they share planning, planning staff, so that just makes it, it's just good because it saves both agencies a lot of money and the and taxpayers a lot of money. But unfortunately, it also causes a lot more bureaucracy and and that slows down our our ability to build more housing quicker. And that's the whole point. So they decided not to go for a bond measured, a revenue measure this this year due to the COVID nineteen. They were going to go to the voting public and ask to approve a bond measure to to finance low income housing, but realizing that the revenue is not there. And 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 people are just worried about buying bread, milk and bread right now. It's just not a good time to try to pass a measure. And with that, oh, and the last thing, I am stepping off of the executive committee of the P N S A Clean Energy, so then another person can step in. The last, because I only have four more meetings left before my term is up. So thank you, and I thank everybody for supporting. And I was the mayor when we first started P N S A Clean Energy, and I was on the executive board for the last couple of years. I guess that's actually more forty-five years, so it's been an honor and I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Lee. Let's go to Vice Mayor Schneider.
Okay, um, to recreation staff, the B PAC grant will be released, so we need to keep an eye on that. We need to get the Millbury Bike and Pedestrian Subcommittee going so that they can help work on that grant. I don't believe they've met for months, so if we can get that back on the schedule, that will be really important in terms of applying for that grant. Bike sharing actually came up on a sustainable meeting I was on last week. This came from Emma Shehales from the Silicon Valley Bike Coalition. They believe, given that most of the bike sharing companies have dropped bicycles or electric bicycles, that the new solution is going to be public ownership and public running of bike sharing or multimodal, mini modal programs. There's not a lot of information on that yet. She did mention that Caltrain is apparently looking at that. I mentioned for us, what's important is that the same system works when you cross city boundaries. So Gina or Councilwoman Pappen, we haven't been able to meet on the bike sharing subcommittee, but that looks to be like the direction that sharing services are going. I attended an online national conference on tourism and hospitality in the time of COVID. And they think actually that business travel will come back. They didn't say exactly when. But they think that the number one key issue to getting business travel back is the cleanliness rating of the hotels and meeting services. They also think that there'll have to be a combination of technical aspects, like the ability to zoom some people in or conference call them in, video conference call them in. So it's going to be a match of cleanliness and technology that will make people feel safer traveling. And they real emphasis on room cleanliness and public space cleanliness. They said something as simple as every doorway has to have hand sanitizers and staff have to check them every couple of hours, the same way they check bathrooms for cleanliness. And then I want to give a shout out to the Dylan Hotel. I think I did this at our last council meeting. But the Dylan Hotel received an outstanding award for cleanliness before COVID. So Millbury is already on the map with one of our hotels for the Dylan out there. Congratulations. Hope you're doing well. I would love to have a request for a fire subcommittee meeting coming up as we bring our various meetings back. The reason is looking at very specific fire prevention guidelines from Millbury. Central County Fire's materials are all for Hillsborough, and it starts, well, if your lot is bigger than five acres, do this. Well, we don't have a whole lot of lots in Millbury that are five acres or four acres or three. And so and given that Meadows is our neighborhood that is most at risk, I would love to see us work with Central County Fire for specific actions that mean something to our residents, given their housing, their neighborhood design on that. I think it's also a good time to try to get Cal Fire in to talk about their evacuation plan. If Meadows has to evacuate and everybody downhill of them are trying to get out of a fire too, the Meadows people will be trapped. I'm being very blunt right now. It doesn't mean it will happen, but the evacuation software that they showed us at the Council of Cities Dinner is intended to help with that, and it would be good to get it in front of our public as we enter fire season. Congratulations to Shelley Ryder and our new staff person, Megan, I believe, who hosted a virtual town hall for the Climate Action Plan. There were quite a few comments given. For the public, you have three, you have until June first to get those comments in, or it might be May thirty-first. Anyway, look at the Climate Action Plan. It is important for our long term survivability. And with that, Mackenzie, Ms. Brady already mentioned, but we believe that there are social protocols, available social distancing protocols, that the two high school students with school ending this Friday, that they can get back to work on painting their two utility boxes. So we are moving forward. Oh, and M C A C and C I A C are still listed as canceled meetings. Apparently, staff is waiting to hear from the city manager whether or not we can start going ahead with our committee meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's go to Councilwoman Aliva.
Sure, and well, as the rest of us have, I have zoomed through this whole last two weeks. And we had zoomed through Heart and through Sal. Everybody's trying to regroup and get things on target. And we lost a very important person in Millbury since last, the last two weeks, and that's George Corey, who was man of the year. His wife, Ina, passed. And I want to send some condolence. I'm sure that, you know, George keeps up up with most of all of us. And Ina was a very special person to him and, of course, a lot of us as well. But the 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 thing that stands out most to me in the last two weeks was the Zoom meeting that I had with the Economic Vitality Committee meeting, which are our own businesses in Millbury. And I just want to give a shout out to Lisa and our city manager, Tom Williams. Thank you so much for caring about these people. I mean, the ultimate goal, obviously, is to get these these people up and running. And they're following strict instructions and there's a lot of frustration, but yet I think that what our city staff has been doing to facilitate and try to get them on the right path. I'm very, very confident that we're going to be at the forefront. So hang in there, guys. I'm not just talking the talk. I'm walking the walk. I do have a small business. And I know the frustration and I know how hard it is right now. And I want to hang in there with you and hang in there together. And Tom, thank you. And Alisa, thank you very much for everything.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilwoman Leva. Councilwoman Pappen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to the council. We did a lot of good work tonight. We'll note that an earlier comment, as far as our high speed rail letter, San Francisco was able to reach a memorandum of understanding with high speed rail, and that's what we've been asking for throughout this, but have not been given that consideration. So I do believe our letter is strongly worded, but should receive some action along those lines. San Francisco is spending four billion dollars underground more than in the station. It's also a connection with a bay crossing, so there's a lot more technical and involved aspects there. So the previous comment was inaccurate. As far as seamlessness goes, it's the better way to go in Millbury. I'm glad to see, walking around the city with masks on, the sidewalk art, the chalk art, sidewalk chalk art is very positive messaging. So thank you to all the residents who have been participating in that. Census numbers, Millbury is ranking second in San Mateo County. Come on, we can do this. We need to get our numbers up so that we will be first as far as percentages going in county. You do count. Please fill out your census online or send it back in the mail. If you do that now, they don't come to your house. Best way to go. Do it early. Make that happen. This weekend, Friday, is graduation for Mills High School, and I'm hoping to talk to the mayor and the city manager. Maybe the city can also support those efforts with the fire truck or some sheriff's department vehicles driving around town. We want to support that. I even saw some illegal fireworks one night at one of the schools. We might want to talk about maybe some legal ones, but we would love to celebrate with all the graduates, both at Taylor and Mills High School and even Cappuccino, since it's mostly in our jurisdiction. So I hope we can participate more so in that. I hope the city reaches out to the high school district to open up their tennis courts and other facilities. Again, with social distancing rules. Again, with social distancing rules, these are assets, public assets that are, need to be used now more than ever. And I asked at the last meeting, and I hope we can do it at the next meeting, is that we define our outdoor eating regulations. We work with the county and we'll work with everybody else so that we can head down the road of recovery as quickly as possible. We know our establishments, the Pancake House, a whole bunch of others, need our help right now. So until that time, please do your takeout and support our local businesses. We've also had a request that martial arts studios are different than gyms. So we're trying to get that message across. We are trying. I saw on the news this weekend, hotels are really going to the extreme, to the point where they're even sealing the door after it's cleaned so that nobody else goes in there, almost like a crime scene. It was kind of interesting. But we can get there. It's a new way of doing business. And I do believe that this council supports all of those efforts to keep people safe and to head down the road of recovery. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a large amount of homework for the MTC meeting tomorrow. So let's, we've got a whole bunch of things. Again, this week, I also have the Blue Ribbon Transportation Recovery Meeting. So we are trying to make transportation safe and also get people back on transportation so we can improve our air quality. And thank you to Councilmember Lee, to all his hard work on the committees that he served on and did a fabulous job. Thank you very much for your leadership in those roles. Greatly appreciate it. You had the technical background as well, the air quality work. So thank you for all your efforts on that. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Pepin. Like to start by thanking Planning Commissioner Joe for planting the flags on Memorial Day, as was mentioned by the speaker earlier in the meeting. We also, let's see, the Caltrain Local Policymakers Group will be reconvening after a couple of months of hiatus later this week. So, and there's also be a high-speed rail portion of that meeting. So hopefully not too many dirty looks after this letter goes out. But let's see if we can make some positive progress with the high-speed rail and make sure that our interests are looked after. We also had the library, San Mateo County Library JPA met last week and discussed the reopening plans for the library. Right now, we're looking at potentially beginning herb side service in early June. There'll be different ways that, that library patrons can access materials through the website, through a texting platform as well. So keep an eye open for that. And we'll certainly put that information out once the libraries are reopened. Also, I'd like to remind everyone to please get.
Can you?
Yes.
Along the lines of the library thing too, it's really important as far as people having an opportunity to get to the internet. It was a big part of our library and so helping in the job front, if we could pursue that as well. Thank you, sir.
Yes, and, and the library did expand the number of Wi-Fi hotspots throughout the shelter in place and the closure of the facilities. So I don't know if there's still hotspots available, but we could certainly check to see if those can go out to anyone that needs them. I also like to remind everyone about the Project Baseline, that testing is now available for anyone that wants it, whether you're symptomatic or not. So please go to projectbaseline.com to get tested here in San Mateo County. And I know one of the benchmarks that the state is using to determine whether counties can move to further into stage two and then potentially at some point to stage three is the number of tests that are being done. And, and the state county needs to get up to about 1,200 tests per day. So if you want things to reopen a little bit sooner than the current pace, please get tested. That will help us get there. So thanks, everyone, for your time this evening. And we will reconvene on, June 9th is our next meeting. So thank you and have a good evening. All right.